Folks, thanks for joining. I'm just giving a couple more minutes. We still have a lot of people signing in, so just please hold tight for another minute.
Scott?
Yeah.
Is it too late to send a comment? Sorry.
Oh, not at all. We are accepting comments until March 31st. So there's definitely about another month left that's uncommented.
Perfect. Okay, and those will be forwarded on to Woodbridge and the powers be?
Yes, correct.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
All right. It seems like most of the beeps have stopped for the most part. And so we can get started. Just at the very beginning, I just want to give everyone a heads up that this is meeting is being recorded and will be submitted to the DEP as as is required under the administrative order. And so I just wanted to let everyone know about that right at the get go. And we will get started. My name is Scott Schelberg. I am with Competitive Power Ventures. I am the Director of State Government and Regulatory Affairs, and this presentation is a environmental justice presentation in relation to the Kiesby Energy Center proposal. And we will get right into it. And sorry, there's still some people signing in. I wanted to share, there is an access for anyone who is hard of hearing or is a non-English speaker. This first page is obviously in English. The next page is in Spanish, but this is in case anyone needs captions, caption services or translation services. There is a more button, more options button. It's the three dots. You can see right here. And if you turn on live captions, that will bring that up. And then there's also an option. If you, in the lower right side, or I guess, yeah, the lower right side of the screen, there's another three dots that will allow you to turn up, turn on captions and change the language. And we also have it translated here, and if that is useful for anyone who's joining. All right. And for a quick rundown of our agenda, I know we have a lot of people on the line right now. We currently have 136 people, thirty, yeah, in the meeting. And so we definitely want to give as many people as we can a possibility for public comment and input. And so we will kick off and go over the ground rules for participation. We'll cover the environmental justice law as it pertains to this project, as well as information about Competitive Power Ventures and our proposal for the Kiesby Energy Center, leaving hopefully a good, really good chunk of time for public input after the presentation. At that point, I'll unmute people. We will have some suggestions on how best to participate in terms of raising hands, using the buttons so that we can get to everyone that we possibly can this evening. And the ground rules for participation. As I said at the beginning, this information session is being recorded and will be submitted to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. We plan to have everyone on mute until the public comment period. And if you would like to comment, please use the reaction buttons and raise your hand. When you do comment, please state your name and city or township. You will have three minutes to speak. We will have a timer up on the screen so that you'll be able to see how much time is left. And CPV will be responding to questions and comments in writing after the conclusion of this meeting. We do want to give as many people a chance as possible to speak and to provide their input in this meeting. We also want to encourage everyone to submit written comments. Those will also be responded to. Those can go directly to me, s k j e l l b e r g at cpv.com. And I do also want to note that any sort of personal attacks or anything like that, there's anyone who's unruly, we will mute you. And then if we have to, if it continues, we will have to remove you from the meeting. So the first thing we want to cover is the environmental justice law that was signed into law by Governor Murphy in September of 2020. The law requires the New Jersey DEP to evaluate the environmental and public health impacts of certain facilities and overburdened communities, which include census block groups of at least 35% of the households qualifying as low-income households, at least 40% of the residents identifying as minority or as a member of the state-recognized travel community, or a group that has at least 40% of the households have limited English proficiency. This meeting is currently operating under the Administrative Order 2125 that requires us to facilitate meaningful opportunities for members of the overburdened community to engage in the permitting decision for our facility. And I also thought it was important, as the state notes on their website, and as we follow the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, the definition of environmental justice has the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people regardless of race, color, national origin, or income with respect to the development, implementation, enforcement, environmental laws, regulations, and policies. And just a brief touch on who Competitive Power Ventures is. We are a developer and manager and owner of electric generation facilities throughout the United States. We build, own, and operate wind, solar, and natural gas facilities throughout the country. We've been in operation since the very late 90s and have a portfolio of natural gas facilities, as well as a significantly growing portfolio of wind and solar. And we really strive in our, what we do in our work to be economic anchors of the communities. We try to build support around our projects, and we also try to provide as much economic opportunity as we can in the communities where we're located. We provide jobs, but more important than that, try to attract high-demand businesses and boost the local economy, whether it's direct employment, hiring local companies to do work at our facilities, several, several things like that. And in New Jersey, we currently have the operating, an operating project known as the Woodbridge Energy Center. It's a 725-megawatt natural gas-fired combined-cycle facility. It's one of the most efficient power plants in the state. Not to mention, one of the most efficient power plants in the PJM, which is the Regional Transmission Organization. It represents 13 they provide electricity for 13 states in the District of Columbia. And that plant has an estimated 6 million tons of CO2 that it actually avoids because it's so efficient that it causes, it displaces other plants, less efficient plants, from running. And one of the things that we're really proud of is that we use, we reuse gray water from the Middlesex County Utilities Authority Water Treatment Facility and actually pay almost a million dollars annually to deliver to receive that, which is actually would be considered a waste product. We also employ 22 full-time employees. On the next slide is our existing air permit, annual emission caps. This is what would be the maximum potential emissions that we have for our plant that is currently there. As you can see, under the Title V permits, we're required to monitor and account for nitrous oxide, carbon monoxide, particulate matter, sulfur dioxide, volatile organic compounds, hazardous air pollutants, and carbon dioxide. And as you can see, this is the existing permit. As people may know that this whole session is for a modification to that permit, since the Kiesby facility will be located adjacent to our Woodbridge, existing Woodbridge plant. And under the environmental justice law, we also take into account the environmental justice to current stressors that exist. We've applied for an air permit for this facility. We are focusing on the concentrated areas of air pollution stressors. There are other stressors, as you can see, that are covered, excuse me, under the environmental justice rule, under the environmental justice law. I have them written down below. And then we'll go down to our, the proposed Kiesby Energy Center, which will be located adjacent to the existing Woodbridge Energy Facility. It's a 657-megawatt combined natural gas facility. We'll use the most efficient turbines that GE has, as well as one heat recovery steam generator. 657 megawatts can provide enough power for more than 600,000 homes. And one of the things that we're, the nation is continuing to need for is grid reliability and stability. As more and more renewables come online, we we're seeing a greater need for flexibility so that that the system, so the PJM and our local distribution companies are able to maintain reliability, keep the lights on. And so the point of Kiesby would be to help maintain that reliability. There's also several local benefits. Are sort of an expansion of what we already provide with our presence in Woodbridge, but we would definitely be looking to do additional funding for STEM-focused curriculum, Project Lead the Way. We also generally focus a lot of our support on local first responders, so police, fire, paramedics, and EMTs. And one of the things that's good about this site is that it's a reuse and redevelopment of a brownfield site that was once contaminated, and we had cleaned up the cleaned up the location for our plant, around our plant. And so we think it's a, we think it's a prime location for this project. And these are the anticipated or maximum potential annual emissions for the modification. So I want to note that this is a combination of our Woodbridge Energy Center with the Kiesby Energy Center. It's not the Kiesby Energy Center alone. And again, covers the major forms of emissions. And noting, I did want to also add on this slide, the environmental, environmental justice stressors would not be any different. Under the Kiesby, we wouldn't be adding any additional stressors. It would be the same stressors. And the last thing I wanted to focus on with this was the air quality. I think it's, it's something that a lot of people have concerns about, and I do, I, we understand those concerns and want to address those concerns as the, one of the most efficient and cleanest natural gas plants in the nation, definitely in New Jersey and likely in, and in PJM as well. It will have significantly lower emissions than current coal, oil, and other older natural gas plants that are operating. Part of the bonus of a new plant is that it will actually displace those emissions on other parts of the grid and in New Jersey. And importantly, it is noting that, I want to note that this facility has several pollution controls. While it does emit the same pollutants as, as people, heating systems, oven, things like that, is that we do have several tons of emissions controls. And that we run studies, have analysis that are part of the application process that have, that we, that determine that they are, our air quality impacts are determined to be protective of the health of the most sensitive members of the public, specifically children, the elderly, and those with existing respiratory illnesses. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Darren Omitz, who is with TRC Company.
Thank you, Scott, and good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to talk about the Title V air permit. And what is Title V? That refers to Title V of the Clean Air Act. And the Clean Air Act is administered by the United States Environmental Protection Agency in coordination with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. The Clean Air Act is the comprehensive federal law that regulates air emissions from stationary and mobile sources. Title V permits are issued to all large sources, otherwise known as major sources, and a limited number of smaller sources. Most permits are issued by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and they're also known as Part 70 permits, and a smaller number are also issued by the United States Environmental Protection Agency. The permits include pollution control requirements from both federal and state regulations that apply to a source. Note that many New Jersey air regulations are in addition to US EPA regulations, and in, in many instances are more stringent and more protective of human health than the federal requirements. Lastly, note that the initial permit for this site was issued in 2012, and that this Title V action is a modification of the existing permit. Next slide, please. The next slide is discussing the air permit application process and procedures that the United States Environmental Protection Agency and New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection follow. So, once an application is received, the New Jersey DEP and the US EPA provide a thorough review of all application materials by environmental experts with years of experience in air quality. When New Jersey DEP and US EPA determine that the project meets all applicable New Jersey and federal regulations, they will issue a draft permit that will be subject to public notice and comment, similar to them, to this forum. You'll have the opportunity to comment on that permit when it is issued in draft form. Note that all federal and New Jersey air quality regulations, including health-based ambient air quality standards, are subject to a comprehensive public involvement process. New Jersey DEP has excellent and transparent public involvement for rule-making, rule makings, similar to the, what the meeting is this evening. Again, note that air quality standards are developed by a team of environmental health experts, such as medical doctors, biologists, toxicologists, atmospheric scientists, and environmental engineers. Lastly, the air permit will contain emission limits, monitoring, ongoing testing, and reporting requirements. The emissions will be monitored continuously and reported to New Jersey DEP to prove compliance with the air quality permit limits. Lastly, ongoing operational oversight by the New Jersey DEP and US EPA will provide assurance that emission commitments are met. That is through such things as stack testing, compliance audits, and regular emissions reporting. Next slide, please. So what is an emissions control technology assessment? It is an analysis of potential emission reductions to achieve compliance with federal and state emission control requirements. And as part of the air permit application, the applicant did perform that analysis. And major items from that assessment are highlighted below. The project emissions of nitrogen dioxide and volatile organic compounds are controlled to the lowest levels achievable in the United States, as demonstrated by the regulatory assessment deemed as the lowest achievable emission rate analysis. Emissions of particulate matter, sulfur dioxide, and carbon monoxide are controlled to the lowest levels achievable for the selected combustion turbine technology and site design, again, as demonstrated by the best available control technology assessment. And then greenhouse gas emissions are the lowest level achievable in the United States from a natural gas-fired electric generating station for the selected combustion turbine design and site location, again, as demonstrated by the best available control technology assessment. And lastly, note again that the natural gas used at the Kiesby Energy Center will be the same natural gas used by homes in Middlesex County for cooking, heating, businesses, and other industrial users. Next slide, please. So this slide is discussing air quality modeling. And as part of air quality modeling, the demonstration is for demonstrating compliance with the New Jersey DEP and US EPA ambient air quality standards. And what, what are those standards? The air quality standards are set at levels that are deemed to be protective of human health for people classified under the US EPA's definition of a sensitive group population. And this includes sensitive groups such as children, the elderly, and persons with pre-existing respiratory illness. Air quality modeling studies are used to calculate the potential air quality impacts of projects and to ensure that New Jersey air quality is protected from potential emissions. The project did undergo an air quality modeling analysis, which is included in the air permit application. And that analysis demonstrated compliance with federal and state air quality standards. Some important items to note from that assessment were the analysis included off-site major air emission sources in the local area that were modeled with the proposed electric generation station. The analysis did include air quality monitoring data from existing air quality monitors as part of a cumulative impact modeling demonstration. The modeling analysis did demonstrate compliance with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection air toxic human health risk thresholds. And note that the modeling was based on worst-case emissions that will be included in the NJDP air permit with ongoing operational oversight by the NJDP and US EPA as discussed earlier. This concludes the Title V air quality permit portion of the presentation, and I'd like to turn over the meeting back over to Scott. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. And with that, we will turn to Mike Floyd, who is a partner at Archer and Grenier PC, and he will discuss some of the other permits that this project will need to apply for. And Mike, the floor is yours. Mike, you may be on mute.
Thank you, Scott. Apologies for the delay there. As you can see here in Slide 20, in connection with the Kiesby Energy Center, there will be additional NJDEP permits that are required. The first three permits you see there are the Upland Waterfront Development Permit, the Flood Hazard Area Permit, and there will be certain general permits with respect to impacts to the freshwater wetlands. These permits are required in connection with modifications to associated facilities that are located in the waterfront development area, as well as portions of the proposed Kiesby Energy Center located in the waterfront development area, which will likely include concrete pads and related site improvements. These applications for these permits will be part of a multi-permit application that will be submitted to the NJDEP Land Resource Protection Program. Also, at the bottom of Slide 20, we will be submitting an application for an Egyptese general authorization for stormwater discharge, which will allow the discharge of stormwater during construction activities associated with the construction of the Kiesby Energy Center, and that application will be submitted to the NJDEP Bureau of Nonpoint Pollution Control. Go to Slide 21, please, Scott. The project will also require an application to the Bureau of Environmental Engineering and Permitting for Division of Water Quality Treatment Works Approval, also known as a TWA permit that is related to sanitary sewer and processed water discharge, also known as gray water discharge. An application will also be submitted to the Division of Water Engineering and Geoscience for water main extension related to potable water supply required for the Kiesby Energy Center. And lastly, the application, an application will be submitted to the Tidelands Resource Council for a Tidelands license, as the state of New Jersey has claims over all lands now are formerly flowed by tidal waters. But these are the additional NJDEP permits that the, that CPV anticipates will be required in connection with the Kiesby Energy Center. Scott, if you want to shift, then I guess to Slide 22?
Yes, thank you, Mike. This will kick off the public information, or sorry, the public comment session of this presentation. I would like to turn it over to Deborah Rosen to lead the.
Thank you, Scott. Again, we're putting up the ground rules for participation. We have a lot of people on the line, and we want to make sure that everyone that wants to speak hopefully gets that opportunity. Again, this session is still being recorded, as all the comments will be as well, and will be submitted to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. Everyone will be still on mute until you are unmuted, once you were called on to make your comment. Again, if you would like to comment, raise your hand. I see that we have 18 people that have raised their hand. Given the number registered for tonight, we wanted to give priority in commenting to those in Woodbridge Township. So if those who have already raised their hand, if you could unraise it for now, and if you're from Woodbridge Township, please, please raise your hand. We will get to the others after, but we do want to give priority since this project, the host of the project is in Woodbridge Township. And we do want to give priority to those that live in Woodbridge. Again, please limit your comments to three minutes. We will give you a reminder after three minutes and ask that you wrap up your We will give you a reminder after three minutes and ask that you wrap up your comments at that point. We encourage anyone with comments, even if you make one tonight, to send them in writing also to Scott at his email address there at the bottom, S K J E L L B E R G at C P V dot com. We are not responding to those questions and comments at this time, but there will be activity by C V to respond to questions that are related to this permit modification in the project. And again, I don't think this will be necessary, but any personal attacks will be commented upon and that individual muted, and if necessary, removed from the meeting. But again, thank you for joining us tonight. I see we have nine.
Just one, Scott, put a pull-up Slide 23, so for people that want to provide written comments via mail, they have your address.
Sure.
Do that up.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Yes, so these written comments are submitted to Scott. This is his written address, as well as his email is listed there.
I also wanted to note that given the number of people we have, that we will, we are, we plan to extend until 8:30, and just wanted to make that. We're not going to cut people off if you're speaking at 8:30. We're not going to, we're not going to do that, but we do have to, in the interest of everyone, we hope to get to everyone's comments, but I will note that we are extending for a full two hours of comments, but will plan to have a hard stop at 8:30.
Thank you, Scott. I'm going to go down the list as I see with the hands raised, and we see Ed Sofield.
Hello, I'm ready.
Yes.
Scott.
You have the floor.
Okay, here we go. The question about EPA quality has already been proved that it's EPA efficient. My big question here is that, is there a need for electric now? And there is a need for electric now. There's tens of thousands of people moving into downtown Woodbridge and the surrounding areas because of all the affordable housing and living accommodations being made available now in the surrounding communities of Woodbridge. Number two, the governor, the governor has mandated that there has to be clean electric power. The only way we can get clean electric power right now in quantity that we need is to have natural gas, which is documented as the cleanest and most efficient of all the gases and fossil fuels, and nuclear energy, which is contaminated. The governor has mandated chargers for all electric cars, electric police cars, school buses, ovens, furnaces, trains, tractors, trailers, all electric. There is a need for electric. Tens of thousands of people moving to this area, they have families, there's a need for electric. That is the question, the need for electric. It's there. With the new construction of a train bridge in South Amboy that's going to be vertical, that train bridge will open up around the center, and there's going to be a need for electric in Raritan Center because it's going to become Newport Elizabeth, and that means electric, more electric power. And also Woodbridge. Woodbridge has taken the force of putting a new power plant in that's going to make us completely independent in case another Sandy happens. If another Sandy happens, we were down for four weeks prior, now we're going to have the independence to support Woodbridge and the surrounding communities with power. We will be independent for all the people and their families. This, this, this company is originally there, spent $300 million on remediating the worst contaminated area in the state of New Jersey. There was nuclear waste down there. It's been reconditioned, it's being used, and they promised to put a waterfront park in with a boat ramp, so finally, we can get access again to the Raritan River. In the 40s, 50s, and 60s, people used the Raritan River with the Kays B Boat Club. They're going to put a park in there, it's going to spill new jobs and relief for the people of the area, so they don't have to travel long distances. Also, this three-year project will involve 100 skilled tradespeople in building, jobs of 1,000 people over a three-year time period, and the new waterfront park will help spur more, more of this. What else do I have to say? That's it. There is a need for the electric. There is a need, we need it, there's no doubt about it. You could talk all you want about emissions, but that is not the point right now. The people are here, they need the power, we need to clean up the remediation of the $300 million they spent once, and now they're going to spend more money to put a waterfront park in here and spur jobs. There's going to be 40 jobs for the people that work in the plant, there's going to be continuing maintenance, and there's going to be 1,000 construction jobs for the people in this area that need work to support their families, send them to school, and pay taxes. Okay? If you want clean energy, you need electric. If you want electric, you need natural gas.
Thank you, Ed. We're at your time.
Three minutes is up, I appreciate it. I did neglect to remind everyone to give your name and your township when you first start your comments. So Mr. Sofield, if you could just quickly give your name.
My name is Ed Sofield, I live in Woodbridge, New Jersey. I've worked the building trades for 50 years. I was a public school teacher. I have a graduate degree, a degree for Trent State and Rutgers in industrial education. I can tell you that there is a need for power to keep the people warm.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Next up is Ann Poole. If she can be unmuted, please. And Ms. Poole, could you please give your name for the record and also your township where you live?
Yes, I.
We can try again. Ann, if you could take yourself off mute, we had a lot of feedback.
We will circle back to you, Ann. You may have two devices on, and that sometimes provides two computers.
I don't. No. I can, I can pass on this because I couldn't.
I'm very sorry, Ann, but I had to, I had to mute you.
We would welcome written comments if you would like, but it's impossible to understand you at this point, we're sorry. Next up, James Dubrowski. Again, please say your name and your township, and if you're representing any entity or company or group, please let us know.
Yes, Jimmy Dubrowski. I am representing the Perth Amboy Area Branch N double A C P. I'm the secretary. I'm a lifelong resident of Woodbridge Township. I'm a proud Perth Amboy Public Schools teacher, and most importantly, I'm the father of a 10-year-old child. When my son was just one-year-old, we had to rush him to the hospital in an ambulance because he could hardly breathe. We soon learned that he had asthma, which is sadly becoming more and more common in our area due to the increasing air pollution. We should be looking for ways to reduce air pollution, not the opposite. CPV already has one massive fossil fuel power plant in Kays B that has been spewing out toxins nonstop since 2016. The last thing we need is another massive fossil fuel plant right next to it, as that would literally double the amount of pollution. CPV's own reports admit this frightening fact, which is why they're not allowed to proceed with the proposed project without an air pollution permit from Governor Murphy's Department of Environmental Protection. CPV literally, literally needs permission from the Murphy administration to further pollute the air of our already overburdened environmental justice community. I honestly don't expect CPV to do the right thing and withdraw the permit application as they're a corporation and their objective is to make more money. But I do expect Governor Murphy and his New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to deny the air pollution permits, as their objective is supposed to be to protect us and our environment from profit-driven corporations who frankly don't care what the effects of their pollution have on us and our environment. As a member of our nation's oldest and largest civil rights organization, I was at our 113th N double A C P National Convention this past summer, where I'm, where I'm proud to say that we passed a resolution calling for the end of all new fossil fuel exploration, extraction, and infrastructure. The resolution cited the alarming 2022 Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change Report, the IPCC report. According to this sobering report, "more air pollution is the last thing that needs to happen anywhere on our planet. What needs to happen is political courage," stated environmentalist Inger Anderson, who serves as the Executive Director of the United Nations Environment Program. Speaking of political courage, we're proud, we're so proud of the continuously growing number of municipalities that have formally stood against the proposed power plant by passing resolutions in opposition to it. Now, we just need Governor Phil Murphy and our New Jersey Department of Environmental Protections to find that same courage and deny this dangerous and unnecessary polluting project. So if Governor Murphy and his D E P see this report on this video, and I hope they do, please step up, do what's right for us, the people of Woodbridge Township of New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the list, Celeste, again, please, your name and township.
Okay, I'm unmuted, yes?
Yes, you are.
Just making sure, yes. Celeste Ricano, I'm from Woodbridge Township, Colonia. I'm a retired Woodbridge Township teacher. Well, first of all, there isn't anything natural about a natural gas power plant. It's methane, and we need to call it that. Methane is 80 times more powerful during the first 20 years after it is released into the atmosphere. One molecule of methane is equivalent to 23 molecules of CO2. It's 25 times more potent than CO2 attracting heat, and 93% of that heat is absorbed by our oceans. So all of this, these continued greenhouse gas emissions raise the threats of sea level rise and severe storms already affecting New Jersey residents. I have questions, I know you won't answer them now, but I just would like to bring them out. Just how transparent and accurate is your reporting of greenhouse gas emissions? Advances in satellite and computer analysis have enabled information about emissions to be tracked independently and in real time. Scientists can now assign responsibility for these emissions to companies such as CPV, so that you are held accountable for the methane pollution. Accuracy in reporting emissions must include what is invisible to the human eye. For example, optical gas imaging cameras can show the invisible VOCs emitted. Your air permit application already admits to an additional 49.9 tons of VOCs for this expansion. Are you measuring only what can be seen? Governor Murphy has pledged a 100% clean energy state by 2035. How does your fracked gas power plant fit into this plan? How will you address the disastrous consequences of this expansion? No set of regulations can prevent accidents that will impact people's health, drinking water, and land. It is the height of irresponsibility to expand this Kays B or any methane power plant at this time. When the climate crisis demands that we move off fossil fuels to clean renewable energy, time is running out. It's not 2016 anymore, when the first CPV plant slid in and the community was ultimately led to believe that there would be a cleanup of a contaminated site. This time, we, the public, are aware of the deception, and we will continue to fight for environmental justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jean Roy.
Hi, thank you. I've been a resident of Woodbridge for about 18 years on the Colonia section. First, I'd like to say, I wish our town council would oppose this project. I suffer from asthma and mostly get it in the summer related to air pollution. We don't, we have enough pollution here, it's amazing. We have ports in the area, the Turnpike and the Parkway go through town, there's already existing power plants. One of the things we need to do is move as quickly as possible from any, away from any fossil fuel, but if it is necessary temporarily to have a, you know, a methane plant that pollutes less than coal or oil, and it was mentioned that you can replace the power from some of those, why don't they shut down some of those coal or power plants and cite a cleaner natural gas plant there? Would be a lot less opposition saying, hey, we're going to cut everything to a fraction by replacing the old plant. Don't add more pollution here. That's the only way I can see any justice in building a new plant. Of course, it would be nice to have a plant built in some of the more affluent and pretty areas because they get away without having any dirty industry in the area. But I'm very, very opposed to this plant. We've got enough pollution here in the Woodbridge area, this part of New Jersey, and I support our friend from the N double A C P. And I should mention, I'm also a member of the Sierra Club since 1972. I'm not officially representing the club, though. So I would like to know what other options there are if someone thinks they really need to build this plant, put it somewhere where it can actually reduce the pollution that's already there. Thanks, that's all I have to say, except I strongly urge the governor, the E P, to reject this permit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, John Sidoti. Again, name and township, please, when you start your comments. Are you able to unmute him, Scott?
I'm not able to unmute.
And you unmute there.
There you go, I'm on mute.
There we go.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, my name is John Sidoti, from Woodbridge Township. I'm a longtime activist and organizer, born and raised right here in Woodbridge. I've worked with, for, and alongside many groups covering a wide range of issues, climate being among the most important. Most of those projects, activist projects, were out of state or in New York City, so I consider this project here the one I'm being active for now and opposing now to be among the very top and the most important because it is a local issue. And it seems like the creeping climate crisis has creeped ever closer. I'd like to start by thanking everybody else on the call who's opposing this, this project, the second CPV gas plant, for carving some time out of your day off, or your night off, your evening off, to be here and oppose this with me. Truly is an honor to stand shoulder to shoulder with everybody as we fight to make Woodbridge and the surrounding townships and municipalities healthier, safer places to live, work, and raise our families. Speaking of family, eight months ago, I became a new father, and much like parents, my parents and their parents before them, I'd like to raise my children right here in Woodbridge. I think my daughter and indeed our children collectively should have the opportunity to grow up in a community that's as healthy and environmentally educated and friendly as it was when I grew up here. Environmental justice is a basic human right. Without it, populations disadvantaged and otherwise are subject to the decisions and ambitions of corporations and executives who see no value in the health concerns of residents living around and next to their operations. The construction of another plant in Kays B would further negatively impact an already overburdened community. It would make the Kays B Energy Center the largest pollution contributor in the state and would defy outright and contradict forthcoming and existing climate legislation and initiatives recently announced by New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy seeking to hit a goal of 100% clean energy generation by 2035. It would have far-reaching impacts for many municipalities, for many communities, township, and municipalities around Woodbridge as well, and is opposed by many environmental groups and committees from said towns. How is doubling the emissions by constructing another plant environmentally responsible? How does this not violate the spirit of environmental justice laws? How does it not fail the minority and low-income families living in close proximity to CPV's operations? How often during the proposal, planning, and construction and operation of these kinds of projects are the potential health and human impacts of operations measured and adjusted? How would the operation of this plan benefit the residents of Woodbridge and the surrounding areas? The CPV spokespeople mentioned that there would be no new stressors, but conveniently omit that those same stressors would be doubled and dramatically increased. They mentioned that this gas is no different from the gas residents of Middlesex County use to heat their homes, cook, and use hot water. If the residents of Middlesex County are already living in heated homes with hot water and fully cooked food, what exactly do we need either plant for, but especially another one? As a resident of Woodbridge, one that's lived here his entire life, as I mentioned in the beginning, I oppose and reject this proposal for a second plant in Kays B. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Laura Ullig Smith. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name.
Good evening. I just, I'm wondering, has anybody calculated how much green space or plantings would offset the amount of emissions that would be set off or given out by this proposed power plant? I mean, it would just put things into perspective of how detrimental the pollution will be. I mean, I know, you know, whatever, it's allowed or it's controlled to the lowest, whatever, but, I mean... to the lowest, whatever, but, I mean, it doesn't mean our health is not affected. So, I mean, I'm just curious how many acres of green space we would need to offset this. It's crazy.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, Chris Noel. And again, if you could state your name when you start your comments and your township, the township you're, you live in.
Hello, my name, yeah, is Chris Noel. I live in Fort Lee, New Jersey. Okay, yeah, I'm kind of with Empower New Jersey and Food and Water Watch. So, you know, I'm generally against the construction of new fossil fuel infrastructure for climate and environmental justice reasons anywhere. But I understand that the D E P, at least, is restricted by legislation and needs to operate on a granular level. So I'm going to try and go a bit granular. So as stated on the D E P's environmental justice website, the department's authority under the law applies in circumstances where three criteria are met: that the proposed or existing facility is one of eight types of facilities enumerated in the act. The applicant seeks a department permit or approval enumerated in the act, and the facility is located, supposed to be located, in whole or in part, in an overburdened community as defined by the act. Considering the hundreds of tons of air pollutants the new plant would produce, it should qualify as a major source of air pollution, meaning it would be one of the eight types of facilities enumerated in the act. And we know that K S B, Woodbridge Township is a minority community, and according to D P's E J map, the block group value combined stressors total is twenty-one, which means twenty-one of the twenty-six stressors are adverse. So it is obviously a highly overburdened community. The adverse stressors for Woodbridge Township include ground-level ozone, cancer risk from air toxics, excluding diesel P M, as well as non-cancer risk from air toxin. According to information in the air permit application presented here and then other documents, about somewhere around one-hundred-and-forty-eight tons of nitrogen oxides and around fifty-one tons of VOCs would be emitted from the new plant. So these would seem to be a large increase over the current Woodbridge Energy Center, and NOx and VOCs are precursors to ground-level ozone. So these emissions would most certainly cause the number of days above standard for ground-level ozone to increase, which is supposed to not be allowed under the environmental justice law. And I wonder, can a company use ozone credits in an environmental justice community, and is CPV pursuing ozone credits for this plant? And I know that Governor Murphy said that the environmental justice rules will be released in April. If this plant would not be approved under the environmental justice law, as the rules are written so far, it cannot be approved. The permit application needs to be rejected, or at least, any decision on the permit application must be postponed until after the rules go into effect. If the air permit somehow suddenly gets approved before April, after over six years' review, do you think we'd have any faith left in the D E P at all? If somehow it looks like this plant could get approved under the laws as they are written so far, then the D P should change the rules so it won't be approved. NJ D P, this is your chance, for those NJ D P people out there who are listening, to not hamstring yourselves in the future like you are by other legislation. Governor Murphy and the D P can't play both sides of the ball and allow this plant to beat the buzzer by one month before the E J rules go into effect and then parade themselves.
Three minutes are up, so could you just wrap up quickly?
Sure. Yeah, what good would environmental justice law really serve a facility like this to get approved in such an overburdened community like Woodbridge? Governor Murphy and D P must deny this unnecessary polluting project. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we're just trying to keep on track, so everybody that wants to speak can. Next up, Anjali.
I did want to note, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that if anyone else from Woodbridge has had a chance to speak, because I, we've just wanted to see if there's anyone else from Woodbridge who hasn't had, who hasn't spoken who would like to. Sorry, Deborah, we can keep going. I just, yeah, I wanted to.
No, I understand, Scott. I was gonna see if these next couple were from Woodbridge, and we could make sure. But Anjali, are you ready to speak?
Yes, thank you.
If you could just take, put your name on for the record and where you're from.
Hi, my name's Anjali Walters. I live in Woodbridge Township. I am just a couple, probably less than two miles away from where this plant is going. I'm very concerned. I'm a wife. I am a mother of three. I have already lost several members of our family to cancer. And I myself was recently diagnosed with precancerous cells that I am now trying to decide how we're going to go forward treating. And we eat healthy, we take care of ourselves. I'm forty-one years old, and this is just not something that anybody should have to deal with. And as pretty as you can paint a picture of a beautiful park, and, you know, the waterfront, if it's polluted and our whales are washing up and our dolphins are dying and our people are dying and they're sick and our children are sick, it doesn't matter. And again, we are already overburdened. I have a pipeline going through my community. I am on a spring. We have water that likes to seep into our basement, and that water is polluted because you've chosen to put gas pipelines through our communities. And now you're fracking more dangerous gases and polluting our environment and even more. So I understand the need for power. I understand that we are, you know, increasing our populations, and I understand all of that. But we can get away from this. It is completely irresponsible to keep damaging the health of our communities and the environment when we have better ways. You guys are already investing in solar and wind energy. There are other things you can do besides continue to pollute an already overburdened community. And I understand the need for jobs, but you cannot risk the lives and health of our children and your husbands and your wives and your parents for a beautiful park and for a job for, for a year or two years, because this is going to affect us for fifty years, a hundred years, who knows? So we just have to do our best, and I hope and pray that, you know, the right decisions are made and that you put people and our environment and our animals and our lives first. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next up, Matt Smith. Again, name and township, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Matt Smith. I live in Brunswick, New Jersey. I'm speaking on behalf of Food and Water Watch. Food and Water Watch is a nonprofit organization with seventy thousand members and supporters across the state of New Jersey, including over three hundred in Woodbridge residents who are members of Food and Water Watch. We are strongly opposed to what would be the second major power plant, gas power plant, built in Woodbridge since 2016. It's an overburdened community that the government has a strong binding commitment to stop the disproportionate lighting of the community like the, and that's exactly what CPV is proposing. What makes it even more flagrant and worse is none of the power that would be due by this power plant would be sold or available to New Jersey residents and businesses. One hundred percent of the power from this plant would be sold out of state for profit, while the pollution would stay here, not just in Woodbridge and not just in K S B, but in Port Amboy and in the dozens of communities that surround and are located downwind from the proposed facility. We are in a climate crisis. You're still dealing with a public health crisis that is far worse than K S B. K S B is suffering almost twice as high mortality rates during the COVID-19 pandemic because of the pre-existing lung conditions and other health conditions. And we know that the fossil fuel industry is responsible largely for those, those pre-existing conditions. The World Health Organization published a study that concluded that three million deaths per year are directly attributed to fossil fuel burning, like the proposed second proposed power plant. But this is unnecessary. New Jersey does not need this power. It's not designed for New Jersey. This company is not planning to go for the port of public utilities by power. It's strictly a profit play for out-of-state, out-of-country multinational corporations to profit off of polluting our lungs and our health. And Governor Murphy must deny and reject this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we are trying to do a priority for Woodbridge residents, so I want to make sure that, that we get that priority right now. Rebecca Schiff, you're next on the list here. Are you, you need to unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you, yes.
Yes, good evening. I'm, I'm not from Woodbridge. I am from Metuchen, New Jersey, with, which is about a, within a three-mile radius of the existing power plant. I would just like to begin by saying that the Secretary General of the United Nations, Antonio Guterres, recently made the following statement at a World Economic Forum, and I quote, "Today's fossil fuel producers and their enablers are still racing to expand production, knowing full well that this business model is inconsistent with human survival." How can CPV today, not six, seven years ago, in terms of what we know about the adverse health effects, justify another toxic fossil fuel plant next to an existing one in a community that is already being exploited and overburdened? I ask that Governor Murphy and the D E P deny this unnecessary polluting project. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we want to give priority to Woodbridge residents. We will try to give to everyone. If you're a Woodbridge resident that still wants to speak, could you unmute yourself right now, and I will call on, on those residents? So have all of our, Mr. Cliff, you are unmuted. Are you a Woodbridge resident that wants to speak?
No, I'm not a Woodbridge resident.
Okay. I have all the Woodbridge residents that want to speak unmuted themselves and been able to speak.
Are you gonna do it that way? No.
We are going to get to the other speakers. We, Woodbridge residents are part of the community that is a focus for us at this point, but we will go on. If all the Woodbridge residents have spoken, we will go on to the others.
Hello, this is Roger. I'm from Woodbridge.
Hey, Roger, what is your last name, and you're from Woodbridge?
Roger Wilson, Forbes in Woodbridge. We live less than one mile from the CPV power plant. The air quality here is already very bad. Why do we need another additional gas-fired power plant in the Woodbridge area? And where does, where does the electricity go? And how will we benefit from this plant? And when will the environmental impact statement be complete? How much additional harmful chemicals will be polluting the air? And we ask Governor Murphy and the D P, please, deny this unnecessary project.
I'm on the line with Roger Wilson. This is Connie Nobiel. I live, we live a mile away from the first power plant and totally disagree with another power plant in the area. It's, you know, we have a chemical plant down the road. We had a, a factory a block away that they are now doing environmental remediation on. I mean, and why did, ten towns are against this power plant? So I, I can't believe that this is going to be a benefit. I don't understand how it's going to benefit us. It isn't. And, well, yeah, I mean, maybe somebody else from another, you know, one of these beautiful areas, would, would they want a power plant in their backyard? I don't think so. I mean, I, I just don't understand why a second power plant is necessary. And I have relatives that live in towns, Edison, Milltown, East Brunswick, you know, with medical problems that, they, I mean, they're against it. So I am asking Governor Murphy and the D E P and the E A P and everyone, please oppose this power plant. I, it's totally unnecessary and not good for our health. Thank you.
Thank you. On to Pranita Bishlani.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is.
Please, your name and township. Thank you. You were gonna do it.
Yes. My name is Pranita Bishlani. I live in Rahway. And I noticed that the public hearing notice meeting date originally said twenty. Will there be an extension of the public comment period due to the errors in the notice? Why was the notice not also written in Spanish? As the community, as the K S B community, it most affects is largely Spanish-speaking. Will there also be a hearing in Spanish? I and others spoke to hundreds of people in K S B, and not one knew of this environmental justice hearing. And in fact, no one knew about the building of this plant. Do you think that is in the spirit of the environmental justice law? The D E P website on environmental justice refers to the EPA definition and states that meaningful involvement means that people have an opportunity to participate in decisions about activities that may affect their environment and/or health. The public's contribution can influence the regulatory agency's decision. Community concerns will be considered as in the decision-making process, and decision-makers will seek out and facilitate the involvement of those potentially affected. Administrative Order 2021-25 states that public hearings will be mandatory and conducted in a manner consistent with the E J law, so as to maximize public participation. In what ways have you sought out and facilitated the involvement of those potentially affected? Are you planning to have in-person hearings in the community? Will any be conducted in Spanish? The E J law states that the applicant organizes and conducts a public hearing in the overburdened community. The permit applicant shall publish a notice of the public, of the public hearing in at least two newspapers, including one local non-English language newspaper. Has that done? Administrative Order 21-25 states that the D E P strongly encourages each applicant to engage directly with individuals in the overburdened community in advance of, in advance of, and in addition to formal public comment, including providing relevant information related to facility-wide impacts. Has that been done? As an interested party, I would like to comment to provide information regarding existing conditions within the overburdened community and potential facility-wide environmental and public health stressors that could result in adverse impacts upon the overburdened community in the event of approval. K S B already has a great many industrial facilities, including CPV One. What would be the environmental and health impacts of adding each of the following? The additional one-hundred-and-forty-nine nitrogen, tons of nitrogen oxides, the additional one-hundred-and-twenty-four tons of particulate matter, the additional forty-nine point nine tons of volatile organic compounds, the additional formaldehyde and lead among hazardous air pollutants, the additional two-point-three-million tons of greenhouse gases, and the additional two-point, two-hundred-and-ninety-two tons of carbon monoxide, additional tons of ammonia, sulfur dioxide, sulfuric acid. I would like to know the, the impacts of each one of those and whether studies have been done.
Please wrap it up, please. Your, this is up, and we want to make sure everybody can speak. Thank you.
Yes. So just, you know, what, what studies have been done on the stressors that were put into place by CPV One and what additional stressors would be created by CPV Two? Those are my, those are my questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Carol Gay. Again, name and township, please.
Yes, good evening. You can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, yes. My name's Carol Gay. I live in Ocean County, Brick Township. But as you know, the climate crisis impacts all of us. No But as you know, the climate crisis impacts all of us, no matter where we are. I'm here to oppose this project and to urge you to cancel plans for this Kaseby power plant and to urge DEP to deny the air permit. Woodbridge and Middlesex County residents do not need another polluting, dirty, polluting power plant. And you have not done an environmental impact study. When are you going to do the environmental impact study? I am retired CWA, Communication Workers of America National Representative, and am now president of the New Jersey State Industrial Union Council, a statewide labor federation representing tens of thousands of public and private sector workers and their families here in New Jersey. And we recognize the serious and immediate threat posed by the climate crisis. That's why we are advocating for immediate and bold action, which includes no new fossil fuel projects. We do not see climate protection as an optional issue for labor because keeping fossil fuels in the ground is necessary to protect workers and their families. We want no more harmful pollution pumped into our neighborhoods, causing more health problems for families. Middlesex County does not need a seventh dirty, polluting power plant. This, it's already overburdened. This community demands that you halt this unnecessary project now. You are doing a huge disservice to the community and surrounding areas. People deserve to breathe clean air. With rising sea levels and major temperatures, both high and low, more intense and more frequent climate catastrophes are inevitable unless action is taken immediately to reverse this trajectory. The window of effective opportunity is closing fast. We have only a few short years to reverse this dangerous path to disaster. And in addition, renewable energy and new technologies are making fossil fuels obsolete. There are cleaner and better alternatives for energy now. Use them. Fossil fuels are burning up planet Earth with serious health and safety consequences for workers, our families and life as we know it. I have seven grand nieces and I want them to have a future. As I'm sure you want the same thing for your families. Cancel this project now for all our family's sakes before it is too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Schultz, again, Raritan River Keeper, I believe. If you could please identify yourself, unmute yourself, identify yourself, your township and who you're representing.
Yes, Bill Schultz, I'm the Raritan River Keeper based out of Kaseby. And when the first power plant came through, we were promised a series of walkways around freshwater wetlands, walkways around a salt marsh with educational signage and public access to the rare river via a kayak launch or some sort of a boat launch in the area. All this had a implementation schedule and a opening date and none of it is going through. I have to believe that this demonstrates the company's commitment to the amenities that they promised us. And as far as I can see, they're not coming through with any of it and no reason to think that they're going to hold through their promises that they're making now. They will stand opposed to this plant. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Daniel Hayden. Again, state your name and township and if you're representing a, a party or entity.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you can.
Great. My name is Dan Hayden. I live 2.3 miles from the proposed power plant in Metatchen. I live here with my son and daughter and wife. At the age of two years, my son was admitted to the ICU unit in New Brunswick with radical airway disease. He couldn't breathe. We couldn't understand what it was. And he was admitted to the ICU there and held there for a week. Since then, he's been taking three medications daily to keep his radical airway disease under control. Radical airway disease is an, is an extreme form of asthma. And these medications that he currently takes minimize his RAD, radical airway disease, asthma. No one knows how these medications impact his health going forward and how they interact with each other and what they do to his life expectancy. Middlesex County already receives an F rating from the American Lung Association for high levels of ground level ozone. If approved, this plant will be permitted to double that amount of VO2. By adding yet another fossil-powered plant, fossil-fueled power plant to the six that we already have in Middlesex County, this would be the seventh. Our air quality will clearly be further degraded. And as a result, our life expectancy of all the residents here will be further reduced. Someone did a calculation of what it would take to offset this pollution. There is a proposal here in Metatchen to plant 6,000 trees to try to offset some of this pollution. Each tree would be a carbon sink of about 50 pounds. So 6,000 trees would reduce the carbon emitted by 300,000 pounds annually, which is 150 tons of CO2. And that absolutely completely pales in comparison to the 2.3 million tons of CO2 that the proposed CPV power plant currently emits and the second one will also emit. Metatchen would actually have to plant 100 million trees to offset the carbon, and that's only the carbon. That's to say nothing of the other toxins that are being spewed forth in incredible amounts. Why are you building an antiquated, outmoded fossil fuel power plant when the state of New Jersey is currently building and planning for offshore wind? I disagree with Mayor McCormick. All the turf and ball fields that this project supports in Woodbridge is not worth the toxic air. I'm with Indivisible Central New Jersey. We're an organization with some 400 members in the area, all of whom are affected. And we demand that Governor Murphy and the DEP deny this antiquated and toxic project. Thank you for your part in this, your role in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ted Glick, please identify your township, municipality, and if you're representing a party as well as your name. Thank you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name's Ted Glick. I live in Bloomfield. I'm the president of the organization 350 New Jersey Rockland. And I honestly kind of feel like just definitely thanking Daniel Hayden. I'm just almost seconding what he said. I have a two-year-old grandson. And to think about my grandson going through what Daniel's son went through is difficult. But let me get to what I wanted to say. I mean, a lot of what I want to say has been said, just to underline certain things. I want to call attention to the fact that two weeks ago, Governor Murphy said that the new policy for the state of New Jersey is to get to 100% clean renewable energy by 2035 instead of 2050. And that's actually a really radical idea to chop 15 years off. And it's, it's a good goal, but this project and the other six fossil fuel projects around the state that are very much alive, one of them is starting to be built actually up in northern New Jersey, the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Project. It, it just, it is hard to fathom. It is, it is frankly just hypocritical and hard to, hard to, hard to, to just swallow that. And so that's why we're here because this, this, this talking one thing and doing something else just has to stop. And this is a great place to stop at, at this clearly dirty, polluting, totally unnecessary, unneeded plant that has, has been said. It's all about the bottom line for the company. That's what it is, CPV. It's all about their bottom line. It's time to get off of that path and onto a genuine clean energy path. Two years ago, the International Energy Agency, they said that as of that year, 2021, there should be an end to the build-out of new fossil fuel infrastructure in the industrialized world. And it should just stop if we're going to have any chance of avoiding climate catastrophe. And here we are in New Jersey, just going against that, going against common sense, going against the, 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 the interests of people's lungs, their health in the surrounding area. Governor Murphy and the DEP, they must deny this unnecessary polluting project. Thank you.
Linda Powell.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. We know that there are myriad of adverse impacts on the health and the climate crisis of emissions from fossil, from burning fossil fuel. And it would take me many hours to go over it. I have some, I have various charts and graphs and articles. And I would just would like to highlight one and some information from the, from the American Lung Association. But just to start out, you know, this area in Middlesex County, but beyond Middlesex County, because air pollution does not know of these man-made borders, already has an F rating for air quality. And unfortunately, these projects are looked at individually. The cumulative pollution of all the toxins or of all the projects are not graded. The one admission that I wanted to discuss is the fine particulate matter. I had down there was 123.6 tons of particulate matter per year. I think in your, one of your slides, it said 94.9 tons per year. Small particulate matter, first of all, can travel hundreds of miles. And it combines with other toxins like carcinogens and brings them deep inside the body. And from the American Lung Association website, small particular serves as carriage for other chemicals that are also toxic and the combination may worsen the impact. Where does the pollution come from? From the combustion of carbon-based fuels. Who is at risk? Anyone who lives where particulate pollution levels risk are high. Some people face higher risk, however. The greatest risks are infants, childrens and teens, people with lung disease, people with heart disease, former and current smokers, people of color and people with low income. And just as an aside, of course, this is part of the definition of environmental justice communities, which I, even though I live over the border in Somerset County, we are in, considered an overburdened community. Research has found that long-term exposure to particulate pollution may increase the risk of developing diabetes. It's also linked with development of asthma in children, worsening COPD in adults, slowed lung function growth in children and teenagers, increased risk of death from cardiovascular disease, increased risk of heart attacks and strokes. Also, a long-term exposure has been found a links to cognitive effects in adults, including reduced brain volume, cognitive decrements and dementia. Scientists have also found evidence that particulate pollution may impact pregnancy and birth outcomes such as preterm birth, low birth weight and fetal infant mortality. And I just want to say that.
Could you start to wrap it up, please? Thank you.
Okay. The research has also confirmed that even in areas that meet the current official limits, this is still a problem. And the short-term exposure can, can lead to premature deaths on the very day that particulate levels are high or within one or two months afterwards. So I have two questions. One is, will the, will the updated stricter guidelines revised in 2008 be used for this permitting process? And the other is, why would PVC not to be developing clean renewable energy rather than focusing on deadly fossil fuels?
All right, thank you. We have a lot of other people that want to speak, but thank you for your comments. Daniel Leberts. And please your name and if you're representing or speaking on behalf of any group and your township where you live.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. My name is Dan Leberts. I'm from Metatchen, New Jersey and Middlesex County, which is like, I think other, a few other people mentioned here from Metatchen as well. We're very close to where this proposal would be. I want to speak from a, maybe a slightly different perspective as a recent, as someone who recently moved with their family to Metatchen, New Jersey. We were up in North Jersey for a little bit and we were up in Pittsburgh where I went to graduate school for a time before moving here. And then one thing that was interesting about living in Pittsburgh all those years is how fiercely people fight air pollution issues because of their history with industry and different effects of, of coal and the steel industry and all sorts of things that to this day are still felt deeply as Pittsburgh is one of the worst air quality places in the country despite the industrializing a few decades ago. So it's really surprising and interesting to me that in a community that's over, already overburdened, that there's such a plant like this is being proposed. In addition to other pollution issues like 3M and the issues with the water pollution that was here that I, you know, was immediately greeted with as when we moved here to know that there are forever plastics, we're in our water supply. It's very disturbing to me that there are all these proposals about this power plant that is, is, as we can see, is deeply unpopular and is, is, is shown to cause all sorts of health problems with the added air pollution it will give, not to mention the climate crisis that we're continually trying to deal with, at which this plant would do nothing to, to help with and only worsen. Finally, I'm also as a recent resident, I see tons of advertising for Middlesex County. I'd have to wonder why people in Middlesex County would want something like this here if they want to attract people like myself to move here. This is not something that's appealing. And now that I live here, I'm kind of almost wondering, should I, we have, I, should I brought my family to somewhere where they think this, something like this is a good idea? And I really don't know if I, I feel comfortable answering yes. I'm also interested to note that at least 15, I think, towns have come out against this. Over 50 community organizations have come out against this. Who was for this? Is it simply just the first person who was called on who's for this? Who has might have had some very interesting and well-prepared remarks in favor. I just don't know who, who wants this thing here. We certainly don't. The people who live nearby and the people, the company who's coming in are not from here. So I don't know why they don't want to put it in their community if they think it's so popular. Finally, the last two, the last slide mentioned two things that I thought was interesting. One, they said, oh, you know, this is going to offset all the pollution of other places, this and that. Well, displace those other things first. If this is, if this is helping these other outdated technologies, deal with that first before you build something new. And then secondly, they say, oh, we're gonna, you know, all your homes are heated with water heaters, natural glass. Trying to almost guilt us like we're the problem. Maybe we should just shut off our heat. Maybe that would be better. Maybe we can have the power plant if we all, we all shut off our heat and cover ourselves in blankets. So you can.
Mr. Leberts, your time is up. Yeah, thank you. David Hughes. Again, town, if you're representing a group or entity and name, please.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Very good. So my name is David Hughes. I live in Highland Park, New Jersey. We are downwinders of your proposed plant and your current plant. Our town has passed a resolution against your plant as many surrounding towns have. I also am here representing Rutgers AAUP AFT, which is the main union of faculty at Rutgers University. We have passed a resolution against your plant and all new fossil fuel infrastructure in New Jersey. I'm a professor of anthropology at Rutgers University and our Board of Governors is in the process of divesting from all fossil fuel corporations. So if we owned any of your stock, we are going to sell those with the hope that your company goes bankrupt and stops polluting our communities and our planet. I want to contest three claims that have been made by this corporation, that you are responsible. That is not true. That can't be true. If you were responsible, you would take that piece of land and you would put a battery farm there. If you were responsible, you would take that piece of land and you would put a battery farm there, which would solve the assistance solving the reliability problem that you're hyping there. And that battery farm would help store power generated offshore by the new wind farms and provide electricity. The second claim I want to contest is your notion that methane is less polluting than other fossil fuels. You know, of course, that's a bit absurd. That's, that's like saying, well, Agent Orange, or well, you know, DDT is, was, is not as bad as Agent Orange when we have perfectly safe alternatives, namely wind and solar. But even in those limited terms, the fugitive emissions, the leaks of methane are now documented and are horrible. And so the commodity chain that your plant would sit at the end of is worse than coal. All right, check out the Climate Trace website, everybody on the line. This is being finally documented independently, the leaks from gas fields. Finally, I, I'll repeat, cumulative claims, as many have said, cumulative impacts, as many have said, need to be documented. It's no good at all for you to say that you are that you are adding very little, because it's an overburdened community. What don't you get about overburdened? The life expectancy in Kaysbys is already 3.5 years less than surrounding areas of Woodbridge. What do you want to do? You want to bring it down more? Earth is an overburdened community. I'm talking about CO2 and methane now. The governor recognizes this. That's why he's committed to taking us away entirely from fossil fuels. I don't think you guys get what that burdening, overburdened community is not moral and certainly not responsible. I have a little time left. I want to leave that to the greenwashers from CPV. Our friends from Woodbridge have pointed out that you have broken your promises in the past about various environmental amenities. I know you won't speak about the president, but try to defend yourselves about past broken promises, okay? Greenwash that.
A lot of people that want to speak, could you please wrap it up? Thank you. Brian Scanlon, please, next. Nick and name, and if you're representing an entity or organization.
Hi, my name is Brian Scanlon. I'm from Wykoff. That's in Bergen County, north of Woodbridge. I'm also a former Wykoff mayor and council member. Bergen County, like Middlesex County, gets a rating of F for ground level ozone from the American Lung Association. And the reason for this abysmal grade are power plants, like the one you operate, operate in Woodbridge, and the one you want to put next to it. I just want to make a couple of comments on the opening presentation. Not once did I hear mention of climate change, which is the defining issue of our time. You implied in your presentation that this new frac gas burning plant would offset coal power plants. Which ones? You said that this plant would add no new stressors as regards New Jersey's environmental justice law. Isn't that wonderful? What you're not saying is that you're wanting to double the stressor that's already at this site. And you can't reclaim a brownfield site by building a future brownfield site in its place. I wonder what lies, sort of lies, people who seek to build dirty power plants tell themselves to sleep at night. Throwing a few dollars at the students who suffer from the pollution that is being created by dirty fossil fuel plants, and throwing a few dollars at the people who have to transport them to the hospital during an asthma attack strike me as very cruel ironies. I'll close just by saying that Governor Murphy must walk his talk on climate and ensure that his DEP rejects the expansion of the air pollution permit that CPV seeks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Tina Weiss House. Name and township, please, and any entity you may be representing.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Tina Weiss House, and I live in Highland Park as well. I'm here to report that not only did our Borough Council oppose, pass a resolution opposing this power plant, but our Board of Education, our Board of Health, and our Green Team all opposed the construction of another gas power plant in Kaysby, an overburdened community just five miles from where we live. This plant would be, this CPV plant would be the second in Kaysby, the third in Woodbridge, and the seventh in Middlesex County. We who live in this area provide more than enough energy and inhale more than enough pollution, resulting in the F rating from the American Lung Association that other people have spoken about. Highland Park stands with the 13, 14, 15, and rising other elected bodies saying enough is enough. And I might point out that many of them surround the township of Woodbridge, including Perth Amboy, Sayerville, Edison, and Highland Park. No matter how advanced and efficient you say your technology is, natural gas is natural gas, a fossil fuel, and burning it produces toxic emissions and climate change. The people of Kaysby are already living next to one large power plant, and somebody spoke about a chemical plant as well, and the site is radioactive, we've been told. Some of it may be cleaned up, but it sounds like there's more radioactivity there. Adding another power plant would make the area one of the worst polluters in the state. We say no to that, and we say no to climate catastrophe, which additional fossil fuels will bring. CPV, you have the know-how to build renewable projects to meet energy needs. You build solar and wind around the country. On your website, you say that the first Woodbridge Power Plant would pair well with solar or wind to provide grid reliability. So why are we stuck with another gas power plant in Kaysby? A deal made in 2008 is madness in 2023. Governor Murphy, you made a promise that all residents of New Jersey, regardless of income, race, ethnic, ethnicity, color, or national origin, would have the right to live, work, learn, and recreate in a clean and healthy environment. The environmental justice law you signed introduced the essential concepts of overburdened communities and cumulative impact. It requires an EJ impact statement, requires an impact statement before any project can proceed in an affected community. Although this law has yet to be implemented-
Your comments, your three minutes is up, so if you could wrap up that would be, so we can get to the others. Thank you.
CPV must not be allowed to go forward without doing an EJ impact statement, and it would document the cumulative impact that people are talking about. Governor Murphy, keep your promise to the people of Kaysby. Deny this gas power plant and switch to clean renewable energy. Provide the kind of leadership we need in this country to build a livable future. Thank you.
Brian Russo, again, unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Brian Russo. I'm from North Hildon, New Jersey, which is in Passaic. So I used to work in the area, and I have several, several friends in the area as well. I am a member of Food and Water Watch, Climate Reality Project, and Sierra Club. So me and my ex-wife agreed that we should not bring children into this world. And one thing that, you know, we didn't necessarily agree on how to handle things, but I became a climate activist when I realized something that many of you do not realize. I'm 44 years old, and there is very, very slight chance of me making it to retirement age to retire and spend my money. I would, I will most likely die way before then because of catastrophic climate loss caused by burning fossil fuels. Fossil fuel industry has known about our impact, its impact on the climate since as early as the 60s, but continues to spread lies and misinformation rather than take chances, rather than develop renewable energy. So I'm wondering, you know, and, and there's many people like me that aren't having kids as well. Life expectancy is down, infertility is up, our air is polluted, our water is polluted, our farms are yielding less crops, and you guys want to propose a fossil fuel plant. So climate scientists agree that we need to end fossil fuels, but one thing that's not certain is whether or not we have a chance of staying below 1.5 degrees now. Every, whenever climate scientists go back to recalculate and remeasure, things are always worse than previously determined. So Governor Murphy has a goal of being on 100% renewables, but we are not even close to reaching his goals. We're not close to reaching Biden's goals, and we're not even close to reaching the goals of the, the Paris Agreement. It seems like the fossil fuel industry continues to try to propose new plants and, and try to grab whatever money they can and also cause whatever type of, uh, this, you know, they, they basically want us to give up as if we're not going to be able to get off of fossil fuels. So I'm wondering, why are you not proposing a solar or wind plant? How can you refer to yourself as responsible? Why have you not cleaned up the park along the water as previously expected? How can I trust any other information that you provide? Do you figure that since the air quality is already an F, that it doesn't matter? Methane gas is not green. The science is clear. This power plant is proposing to create emissions in an already overburdened community and provide it out of state. It's going to be the biggest emissions plant in New Jersey, and there's not even any demand for this power. Temperatures are rising in New Jersey at a rate two times as fast as elsewhere, and New Jersey is already extremely vulnerable due to being a coastal state. Your jobs mean nothing to me. Renewable energies would produce these jobs as well. There will be no jobs, and there will be no economy on a dead planet. I'm asking DEP and Governor Murphy to reject this power plant, and for those involved in planning it, to rethink your careers and what you're doing here. Thank you.
Paula Rogovin.
Hi, I'm Paula Rogovin. Governor Murphy issued an executive order in 2018 that every agency, every department, board, and commission would protect environmental justice communities. He supported and signed the environmental justice law, but has yet to implement it. On Ask Governor Murphy a few weeks ago, I asked the governor about the Woodbridge Power Plant. He said he didn't really know much about it. Well, here we are to tell him about it and why it's absolutely essential that he and the DEP reject this unnecessary polluting power plant. I have six grandchildren and have taught hundreds of kindergarten and first grade children during the 44 years I worked in New York City public schools. I care about children's health. Does Governor Murphy care about children's health? Does the DEP have a commitment to children's health? Children in Kaysby and surrounding communities like Woodbridge, Edison, and Perth Amboy are already overburdened by multiple harmful exposures. The children are particularly vulnerable to pollution. Last year, 136 healthcare professionals and scientists issued a letter to Governor Murphy and the DEP about the impacts on children and others from the toxic brew of pollution from many sources of, around the region, from power plants to incinerators and industry vehicles that were near the PVC power plant that's proposed for Newark. The data and conclusion from that report apply here. When CPV wants to add one more power plant, the pollution, however big or small, will be part of the toxic brew of existing pollution. It's a toss-toxic carcinogenic brew that impacts these communities as well as so many other environmental justice communities here in Jersey. The same communities the DEP and Governor Murphy promised to protect. It is those cumulative impacts on public health that are critically important for Governor Murphy and the DEP to consider. The DEP and Governor Murphy must do more than just say they care about children. Frankly, I don't believe that they care about the future of New Jersey's children until they prove to us that they are here to protect children's health. As I was writing this earlier today, I heard Otis Redding singing, "Action speaks louder than words." That's so true. A few questions I have. Does Governor Murphy care about the child, health of the children in the Woodbridge region? If he does care, the only obvious conclusion would be to reject the CPV power plant. Will he call on, on you to withdraw the air permit application? When will he reject this power plant?
Angelie Ramos, Sierra Club, again, name, township you live in, and entity you're representing.
Yes, good evening. My name is Angelie Ramos, and I'm from Lawrence Township, and I'm the New Jersey State Director for the Sierra Club. I'm testifying today on behalf of over 80,000 members and supporters here in New Jersey. My Sierra Club colleague, Tiziana Botino, has, will also be testifying in a short while. I would like to start by saying that New Jersey does not need an additional gas fire power generation, as my colleague, Tiziana, will, will explain. Additionally, New Jersey does not need all of the associated coal pollution that comes from the combustion of natural gas. The proposed construction of a 657-megawatt combined-cycle natural gas electric generating facility at the Kaysby Energy Center located in Woodbridge must not be approved under the promulgated environmental justice law and the almost-to-be-adopted New Jersey DEP rule. Woodbridge in New Jersey, a predominantly low-income community of color, is an environmental justice community with three major sources of air pollution, but also home to more than 25 schools and 48 daycares. When considering a three-mile radius from the proposed plan, this area experiences significant amounts of pollution above natural averages from cancer-causing air toxics, ground-level ozone, and PM 2.5. When we talk about air pollution, we know this is not just a single block problem. This affects us all locally, statewide, and regionally, and those closest to the source are oftentimes the most impacted. As mentioned by many of us, the American Lung Association gives Middlesex County an F rating for high ozone days. Ozone not only causes and exacerbates a large number of debilitating conditions such as asthma and heart disease, but also causes premature deaths in older populations. Specifically, this proposed power plant will have the potential to emit 148.7 tons per year of NOx and 49.9 tons per year of VOCs, both of which are precursors to ground-level ozone, but are also damaging to our health under oath. The entire state of New Jersey is in non-attainment under the Clean Air Act for ground-level ozone, or SMOC. Thus, how can CPV justify the addition of 148.7 tons per year of NOx in a state that does not need the National Ambient Air Quality Standard for ozone, does not need more gas-generated power, and is proposing to build this additional cluster of pollution in an already overburdened EJ community? Additionally, CPV NOx emission credits are required for you to be able to operate this proposed power plant. Are you acquiring NOx credits from another state and community that perhaps does not experience the same horrible air quality that we do here? New Jersey Sierra Club is actively looking into this. Lastly, the US EPA is currently reconsidering the current ground-level ozone national standard that can potentially be even more stringent and even harder for New Jersey to attain this national Indian, ambient air quality. So again, how does adding yet another natural gas fire power plant help the state and our communities? To conclude, the New Jersey Sierra Club opposes the construction and expansion of natural gas infrastructure, and we will additionally be providing technical comments. Thank you.
Kayla M., please unmute yourself, your name, township, and if you're speaking on behalf of an entity.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So my name is Kayla. I'm located in Elizabeth, New Jersey. I'm not speaking on behalf of anybody. I wanted to reiterate one more time, Middlesex has an air quality rating of F. I wish I had the chart near me, but we are, but this proposed plant is surrounded by schools. It's in a lower income area. It's already overburdened. New Jersey is especially vulnerable with our sea levels rising twice the average level of the, on the entire East Coast. Nearly one in four children in Newark suffer from asthma. Every, I mean, feel like everybody here has mentioned that they have asthma. I have asthma. My family members have asthma. We live nearby. It doesn't matter where we live in New Jersey, any nearby states, they mentioned that this kind of pollution can travel hundreds of miles. They mentioned that this kind of pollution can travel hundreds of miles. This is going to affect everybody near us and I'm just learning today that this power isn't even going to help New Jersey people? It's just going to be sold to outside states? Well, we suffer the consequences insane, just so they can support paying for a park and, what, paying for police training? Like, I don't understand the benefit for anybody in New Jersey besides CPV. Um, speaking of CPV, um, the first plant we were promised, like a park at the last town hall, the governor mentioned that it was not, the park wasn't created because it didn't have the right air quality for it. If we, you guys are proposing another plant? If we already don't have enough air quality or, I don't know, if the toxicity levels are too high for, to build a plant, to build a park, to build access to our Raritan River, if it's already too polluted, you can't even be trusted to finish the first plant? I don't understand how you guys are going to try to do it with another one. Um, so already, we can't trust you. Um, CPV, their last notice was with the wrong dates, as somebody mentioned before. We're asking again, is there going to be an extension because it put 2022 instead of 23? Obviously confusing many people. Um, along with that, the permit application was not available at the link provided. The permit application was not available at the physical location. I believe it was the town hall, people tried to go and get it, um, but they didn't know what we were talking about. The notice wasn't published in newspapers circulating the overburdened community, so I'm confused um, how we're supposed to trust CPV when they already cannot deliver on any other original promises? I need to see, I need assessment, I need to see an environmental justice report. I need to see who this is helping, um, besides CPV and you guys' bank account, obviously. Um, I need to see the focus moving away from earth-destroying fossil fuels, focus on renewable energy. If you want to be in our community, focus on solar, focus on wind. Um, I really hope that Governor Murphy and the DEP will deny this proposal. It sounds like everybody is against you guys, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how they could in good conscience, um, pass this. I'm done, thank you.
I'm Elizabeth Nadue.
Uh, I'm concerned that everyone from Kaysbey get their chance to speak. I noticed there was someone in the chat named Lucy who said she was from Kaysbey and she had raised her hand and had not gotten a chance to speak yet. Could you check on that first?
She, she's on the list there. We are going down, um, in order and I can see her right there.
So I, I'm happy to let her speak now and go later, if you'd like.
We, we should have time to get to her, we're going through 8:30, um, so, uh, we, we.
You want me to proceed?
That would be fine.
Okay, um, my name is Liz Nadue. I hail from Hoboken and I'm a member of Don't Ask the Meadowlands and Food and Water Watch New Jersey. I'm proud to say that the City Council of Hoboken has passed a resolution condemning this power plant and we stand in solidarity with the people of Woodbridge and Kaysbey. My heart goes out to the people of Kaysbey. It was heartbreaking to listen to the parents here tonight talking about their young children already suffering from asthma and other illnesses due to the negative effects and impacts of pollution. Woodbridge already has one dirty power plant. The prospect of putting another large and highly polluting facility here is downright criminal. The lungs and lives of the residents of Central Jersey and beyond will be put at risk because of the NJDEPs in action and the governor's refusal to stop this and the six other fossil fuel projects New Jersey has pending. How can New Jersey fulfill the governor's own objective of being fossil-free by 2035 if he allows a plant with 4.6 million tons of greenhouse gas emissions every year to be built? How can our governor, who has promised to protect the lives of those who live in our environmental justice communities, sleep at night when he refuses to stop a power plant that will sacrifice the health and well-being of thousands of elderly, immunocompromised, asthmatic, diabetic, heart and kidney diseased, young and old, expectant mothers and their unborn children? It is an oxymoron to say that any power plant is not invasive and harmful. And when you add that and consider it too with the cumulative effects of two power plants, it is hypocritical. I call on the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and Governor Murphy to save our old and infirm, our pregnant mothers and their fetus, and all people at risk in the overburdened, already polluted communities of Woodbridge and its neighbors. Be the environmental heroes you can be. Stop the permit for this plant now. Edit the EG law to protect the residents of our environmental justice communities now. CPV, work for green energy solutions to your power needs.
Can we wrap up, please? Your three minutes is up and we have a lot of people still waiting to speak.
Yes, I am done. We do not need this power plant. I am opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Montorio.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. My name is Christina Montorio and I'm a business agent at Teamsters Local 469 in Hazlet, New Jersey. We're here to support CPV's application for a permit. The first CPV project provided numerous union jobs to our region along with many permanent jobs after construction was completed. Our members rely on jobs like these to make their ends meet, support their families in New Jersey. We applaud CPV for their commitment to using union labor, which means the highest quality of workmanship and the safest working conditions possible. Further, these projects are remediating contamination that has plagued the banks of our Raritan River for over a century as a result of the unregulated industrial uses these lands were home to in the past. Teamsters Local 469 supports CPV in their application for the Title V and Gipti's permits because this project will help remediate existing brownfields, bring revenue into the town for the people of Woodbridge, continue to provide reliable energy to our region, and most importantly, will create family sustaining jobs for Teamster and other union members in our area. We urge the NJDEP to approve this important project. Thank you.
Thank you. We have about a half an hour left in our extended time. I just wanted to call out if there are others from Woodbridge that have not had an opportunity to speak. Unmute yourself and we will call on you now.
Hello, I just, I wanted to ask how people on the phone can participate. I'm in touch with a number of people on the phone who are trying to, um, you know, make it known they want to speak, but I don't recall any instructions for how they can raise their hand or unmute.
Uh, there is, um, at least one person with their hand raised on the phone, so, um, and they will be able to unmute. I don't know if there's others.
Just to go past 8:30. We got a lot of people who want to say something.
Uh, this was scheduled for two hours, we're already scheduled to go beyond. Let's continue on and we'll see how far we can get. Anybody else from Woodbridge that would like to speak at this point?
Hello?
Yes, Lucy, are you from Woodbridge?
Yes, I am from Woodbridge. I am actually from Kaysbey.
Okay.
And, um, I was, um, one of the people that, um, I actually found out about, um, about this power plant because, um, s- someone came, um, with a flyer to my door and, um, they gave me this, and they gave me the information. And I totally oppose because I have a child that has, that has asthma. And also, um, the information that I was given that day was very interesting because, um, I live here for the past, um, like 16 years and, um, a lot of the information that, um, you know, we usually get, we usually get it in the mail when anything's happening. And about this power plant, I happened to, that day, um, this person was walking around with this information that then got to her, that I got that information. Uh, most of the community here in Kaysbey, which Kaysbey is about probably like four or five blocks, which is not a very big community, is mostly Spanish, which, you know, they, none of the people around me know what's happening. And it's affecting highly their health, this community. And no one knows what's happening. I know what's happening because, um, fortunately, I know English. I, you know, I was born and raised here. A lot of people around this community aren't. Then, you know, probably their kids know English, but they don't. They, they know Spanish, you know? And a lot of people around here are very sick. Me myself, I'm young and I'm very health, you know, health-wise, I'm very sick. And it doesn't make sense. Think about.
Nothing to be sorry about.
About everything that we're living with the environment and everything. And we're trying to get away from everything that's happening. And here we are doing a seventh power plant in this, in, in this, um, county, huh? And why they don't do in other counties, huh? In this county, we're, we're, we're like six blocks here in Kaysbey. We're not even, we're not talking about that Kaysbey is like 20 blocks. We're like, literally, we're like six blocks in Kaysbey. You could go around in a car, okay? And we're like, a lot of kids here have asthma, a lot of kids here have seizures or sick, you know? And a lot of, and a lot of people here don't even know what's happening with that power plant. And, and, and how is it that these companies, because they have money, they could just pay off whoever and just do whatever they want and don't care about people's life? They don't care about people's health? And they don't care about the environment, nothing? Like, people don't mean, people don't mean nothing to them?
Thank, thank you for your comments, Lucy. We, we are.
Doesn't, it doesn't mean nothing to them.
Can, can you wrap it up a little bit? Um, we, we are trying to get to everybody and, um.
I understand, I, I under, I'm sorry that I got a little bit emotional, but it does make me emotional because I'm the one that is living in Kaysbey and I'm the one who's affected. You know, probably, you know, it affects us all. But, you know, when you're living in, in the situation, it's very difficult for you to preach to the choir, right? If you're not living in the situation, you just, you know, all these companies, they don't live around the area. So what do they care about other people's health or well-being, right? They don't need to deal with it.
We, we do need to move on. Thank you for your comments. We'll move on to the next person. Uh, Yanet. Again, your name, township, and if you're speaking on behalf of any group.
Can you please give instructions to people on the phone? They're, they're trying to participate and they're not able to.
You should be able to raise your hand by pressing star five.
Yanet?
Hi, yes, um, hi. Hi, um, my name is Yanet Ramirez. Um, I live in a Newark, New Jersey area and I am speaking in solidarity with the Middlesex residents. Uh, like them, we are also facing gas plants imposing our community. Um, and I, you know, I want to, I want to congratulate CPV really. Congratulations for the show and the fluff that you have put up here. You can't fool people with this presentation proposal. It is not helping this community. It will only line the pockets of your shareholders. You know that and we know that. We are beyond disgusted that this proposal is not paired with a cumulative public health impact analysis. Middlesex County already has six fossil fuel power plants within six-mile radius. It is literally humanly irrational to want to add a seventh power plant. It's only rational if you're thinking of profit, which disposes of the health of its residents every day. You've already heard that this community is overburdened. Many are low-income, disabled, unemployed, Medicaid recipients and limited English speakers. All of these intersect and affect these residents with already various health inequities like respiratory, cardiovascular disease, autism, learning disabilities, cancer and neurodegenerative diseases. This project is the opposite of what this community needs. Don't come with your presentation and that think just a few cute graphics will make you look less dangerous. Cleaner fossil fuel plant is what I heard. That is a contradictory statement. It must be nice to not be personally affected by the folks whose statements you have just heard here today. We know that we need to end fossil fuel projects. We know another glass, gas plant is not going to be beneficial to the community whose land you are occupying. We know the earth doesn't need another gas plant. It will only increase harm from severe weather events, heat and flooding in this community. The DEP must do its job and commit to protect the people it's supposed to help. Fossil fuel gases are not contained in one area. We all suffer when another gas power plant goes up. Forget your short-term profit and think of the long-term harm. We know CPV won't withdraw their permit, so I'm here to demand that Governor Murphy and the DEP deny this unnecessary polluting project. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Uh, next, North Brunswick Environmental. Please give your name, township, and I assume you're representing North Brunswick Environmental.
Yeah, yeah, this is Siobhan. Turn that down. Yeah, um, this is Siobhan Gibbons. I'm with my colleagues here at the North Brunswick Environmental Commission and I'm actually following up, really following up on what Lucy just said. Um, I was actually in Kaysbey a couple of weeks ago and spoke to about a dozen people, um, to tell them about this upcoming meeting, but found that nobody I spoke to knew about this plant. These were people who literally lived within a mile and a half walking distance of this plant. I could even just see where it was going to be from where it is these people were living. Not one of them knew. So here's my questions. What has CPV done to let people know about this proposed plant? What have you done? And I want to just, you know, see the list. What have you actually done to inform people? And obviously, since nobody I met knew anything about it, what are you going to do in the future? What are your plans to let people know about the plant? Thank you.
Thank you. Steph? Unmute yourself and name and township, and if you're speaking on behalf of a group.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Martinez. I'm from Township of North Bergen and I'm here on behalf of, well, part of Food and Water Watch and, and the Earth Talks, North Bergen Earth Talks. Um, I, I just want to say like, can you guys please just stop the greenwashing and stop the lies? It's, it's, you're, it's a fire, gas-fired power plant. You are not clean, you are not renewable. You're not even giving back to Woodbridge homes. You're getting profit out of the state. It's tiring to hear the people living in, or. It's tiring to hear the people living in overburdened communities having to advocate for clean air, something that is for everyone. That includes you, Mike, and you, Scott, and the rest of CP, CBP. It breaks my heart that people have to share their stories about the struggles. Someone that they love, someone that they had know having an adverse health effect like cancer, respiratory illnesses, asthma, to just be taken seriously. And it's irresponsible of CBP to not even have a language justice. Why, why isn't there a Spanish option? Like, you might not think of it as something, as much like, you know, as an importance, but it's part of your criminal act. I'm a first gen Latina who has experienced time and time again. Uh, when I bring these proposals or like bringing up these environmental injustices to my community, all I hear and see is like people that are shocked and I don't even know about these plans. And you can present the Clean Air Act and the EGA law, but actually follow it and set the example. Because CBP has time to turn to clean energy alternatives and just come back with new plans. And if you wanna quote the EGA law you left out, that the, that the law requires the DEP to evaluate the environmental and public health impacts of the following facilities on overburdened communities. And the first one is major sources of air pollution, gas-fired power plants. So where's your data on the profit that goes back into Woodbridge? Where's the data on the measuring of the pollutants that this plant will emit? Where are your public health impacts data? You're all talk. You think that you're doing your part, but there's no transparency. There's no accountability and the people are tired. And neighboring communities are tired. It's 2023. There's other clean energy alternatives. Woodbridge does not need a second power plant. And if you're, if money is your language, because that's what we see continuously, you keep profiting off of people and their, their health and their health, then there, there is a way to do both. Good for the people and planet. It's not too late to transition into New Jersey's 100% clean energy economy. And I urge Governor Murphy to deny this toxic polluting power plant. And, and the DEP to deny this permit to reach these goals. Thank you.
Iona Connor?
Thank you. I live in Brick, Ocean County, but I represent eight billion people around the world. All of whom will suffer if this plant is built. Sure, they don't live close like the Keesby people do, but nonetheless, the rising CO2 and pollution is gonna affect everybody. Back in the sixties, my first home was in South Plainfield. And we bought our, a little boat and I swam and water skied in the Raritan River. In the 1980s, I was Middlesex County Health Department Air Pollution Inspector. I learned how to watch the sky, the emissions from stacks, how to write violations, and bring polluters to court to be prosecuted. In the 1990s, I worked at the DEP. I was in the hazardous waste division where we worked with people who were affected by super fun sites. So I know about radioactive sites and brown, brown sites that need to be cleaned up. Then, and then I fell in love and married a man who lived in Maryland. And we, we started the Grassroots Coalition for Environmental and Economic Justice together. The first day I li, I moved to Maryland, I noticed how clear the sky was. I had been living in New Jersey for decades. And I had never seen such a beautiful, clear blue sky. Even though I was born in New York and moved to New Jersey when I was nineteen and then moved to Maryland, and then I moved to Pennsylvania, I have always considered New Jersey my home. After forty years away, I'm back in Brick. Wherever I went, I kept my eyes open and my brain turned on. I was proud of all the environmental activists here and the way people fought for all that was right, more so than what I witnessed in Maryland or Pennsylvania. The environmental ethic was strong here and the laws were enforced. And I was part of it all as an air pollution inspector. We were tough back then. We had a boss who wanted to see all the polluting companies brought to justice. We were encouraged to write every single violation we could find. In 2004, we moved to Pennsylvania and I became involved in fighting fracking, going to protests and publishing the horrible stories in the global warming newspaper I've been publishing for fifteen years. You may or may not know that in November of 2022, I published a story about Cabot, Cabot Oil and Gas, which pleaded, quote, "No contest to fifteen criminal charges, including nine felonies." It marks the first time Cabot took responsibility for destroying drinking water supplies. The company agreed to pay 16.29 million to Pennsylvania American Water to build a public water system that will provide clean water to the impacted people. Along with a pledge, the company will cover water bills for seventy-five years.
And Connor, your time is up. Could you please wrap it up?
Sure. Um, if you put this power, if you allow this power plant to operate, you are putting everyone's life in danger in, in that room, in this state, in this country, in the world. You have a very important responsibility. You need courage now. You must deny this permit. Done?
Thank you. Uh, we're reaching towards the end. I wanna make sure there's no one else from Woodbridge that has not had an opportunity to speak. All right, we'll continue on. Lisa Roughman Weiss.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'm Lisa Roughman Weiss. And I live in South Brunswick, New Jersey, in Middlesex County. And um, I just find that the idea of, you know, starting another fossil fuel plant is actually quite insane in, in the year 2023. I don't understand unless it is only for profit. It makes absolutely no sense when we know very well that any extraction or of fossil fuels is going to warm our planet and cause much more to the climate crisis. I don't understand why anyone would consider doing something like this. It just makes no sense to me. Uh, I am very much against it. And I do think that, you know, I'm not a scientist. I, I would not have the same kind of eloquent arguments that some of these previous people have had, but I very strongly oppose this plant. And I wish that they would put their energies towards renewable energy. And uh, being that they already are invested in that, it, it just makes no sense that they wouldn't be doing at, you know, further work with that. And I, I yield to other people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do notice that some on the telephone have added, are any of those individuals from Woodbridge that would like to speak? You can unmute yourself and just let us know that.
If you're having unmuting, star six will unmute your phone.
All right, um, we'll move on then. Tiziana Bottino?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Tiziana Bottino. I'm the senior representative for New Jersey with Sierra Club. I'm actually based in Woodbridge, Virginia. Uh, I'm speaking in opposition to this Woodbridge plant expansion. As just last week, Governor Murphy announced long-term decarbonization goals for New Jersey of 100% clean electricity by 2035, the most ambitious clean energy goal in the nation. The state has also um, CO2 emission reduction goals of 50% by 2030 and 80% by 2050. The proposed power plant, however, would add a total of two million, fifty-five thousand eight hundred metric tons of CO2 emissions every year. This could increase New Jersey greenhouse gas annual emissions by over 2%. New fossil power is not in line with those goals and would set these efforts back. New York has similar climate and decarbonization goals, and they denied air permits on natural gas plants in 2021, saying that new fossil plants are not in line with the state's decarbonization goals. This is the same conclusion New Jersey needs to come to as well. New Jersey, New Jersey State Onboard a Public Utility conducted a study that determined that no additional gas is needed in New Jersey. The study found that even under periods of low probability peak demand, there is an existing surplus of gas at hand for New Jersey to consume. The New Jersey BPU has actually intervened, um, for dockets in opposition of natural gas compressor station expansions i- in New Jersey. The state does not need more gas-generated electricity, especially those projects that would only worsen our climate crisis and public health. There is no reliability issue. Additionally, this proposal only perpetuates our reliance on highly volatile, volatile fossil fuel markets nationally and internationally. Overreliance on gas is only going to hurt ratepayers as gas prices are incredibly volatile, volatile and have been increasing across the nation. Especially here in New Jer, there in New Jersey, uh, they, we have seen increases of up to 25% in gas utilities in 2021. Gas prices across the country rose around 62% year over year at the start of 2022. We don't want a grid depending on gas because it won't serve the customer as well. The most effective way to protect customers from fossil fuel gas-driven price spikes is electrification of home heating, heating, and appliances and procuring more wind, solar, and battery storage as sources of power on the grid. The New Jersey BPU has also confirmed this through their ratepayer impact study released last year. Finally, I'd like to support my colleague, Angelie Aramas, and every other attendee tonight who spoke on the negative impacts of this project on already overburdened communities. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Uh, Herb Tarbus?
Excuse me again. I'm in touch with someone who's on the phone. They say that they are not allowed to unmute. They can hear, but they can't participate and they'd like to participate.
Star, uh, star six should unmute their phone?
Maybe you can test it, but they're telling me their experiences, they are not allowed to unmute. Pressing star six and they're not unmuted.
All right, I will, uh, I will test it out and find out.
Mr. Tarbus, if you wanna go, while they're checking that out?
Um, okay, thank you. Herb Tarbus, Piscataway, New Jersey. Uh, my residence is nine miles northwest of this proposed environmental crime scene. Let's be clear, fossil fuels are wholly incapable of producing clean electricity. So why do some claim otherwise? You know, it's about an addiction. Some folks talk about an addition to fossil fuels, but the real addition is to money and power. As an example, we heard a gentleman earlier repeat several times, we need power, we need more power. Why? Well, the gentleman from the housing trade said the power was needed to build more housing. Interesting coincidence. Is the essential message that there needs to be more pollution in order to further enrich real estate developers? And even more interesting is the claim that this is affordable housing causing the need for the power. The accumulation of money and power often victimizes the least among us. And here, even claims it is for the benefit of the people being victimized. Uh, shifting focus to the super slick presentation offered tonight, there are some important points to consider. The claim that the plant will somehow be removing pollutants is simultaneously creative and disingenuous. More capacity brings lower prices, which brings more demand, not less. The claim has little to no merit. We also heard a long list of permits recited, along with various lists of credentials of the board members who set the environmental standards to be met for a permit to be issued. It all sounds great. Unfortunately, it creates an illusion of there being an overall political system in place which operates for the benefit of the people in New Jersey. Cut me a break. This is New Jersey. We know, we all know how this works. No long list of required permits, college degrees, or other credentials is evidence that there's adequate representation or protections in place for the working class folks in New Jersey. Heck, my state senator claims to be an environmentalist. Sure, he banned plastic straws, but not a syllable uttered in opposition to the expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure here in Middlesex County. As Woodbridge resident, Mr. Browski stated, what is needed here is courage. Political courage, yes, but also personal courage. Ask yourself, what is my legacy here on planet Earth? Here in our nation and here for this overburdened community. Am I working to protect those around me? Or am I working on behalf of the polluters and the power brokers who shield them to perpetuate their addiction to money and power? I know where I stand, and I know where the vast majority of folks on this call stand. Will you join us?
Scott, will we be able to do anything with the telephone or?
Yes, as uh, anyone who's on the phone who has a hand raised, when we get to them, they can, we can unmute. I don't have the ability to unmute people on the video call, but I do have the ability to unmute people on the phone.
Are there any on the phone, anybody else, as we're nearing the end of our extended time, uh, that want to speak that are from Woodbridge?
Can't unmute themselves and you're asking them to talk?
They are all unmuted.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
May I speak?
Uh, we are asking for people that are from the Woodbridge community. Are you from Woodbridge?
Well, I'm in Edison, but I'm like three miles down the road.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Okay, um.
Can you identify your name, please?
Yes, my name is Esther Barkin, and I live in Edison, which is a very densely populated part of Middlesex County. We're at the crossroads of Route One, Route 27.
I think we've lost you. Can you still hear us?
Can you hear me?
Can hear you now. We lost you for a minute.
I don't know what happened. Okay. So anyway, we, we have a lot of major highways here. And I live two blocks off Route 227, where we have two mega Amazon distribution centers and a FedEx distribution center. So needless to say, the air is very heavy with toxic exhaust. I have lived in the Metuchen Edison area for forty-eight years. And I have seen the change in the quality of the air that I am breathing, including the dust in my home. In spite of a large HEPA filter on my furnace and an air cleaner in my living room, the visible dust particles are heavier and grainier. So I have no doubt that I am breathing polluted air, which is harmful to my health. And as we heard before, the air quality in our area has been rated F. So a lot of what I wanted to say has already been said. But I want to add that we are, we do not want to be statistics or casualties of a capitalistic enterprise. We are human beings and we are this community. And we say, no, we do not want CPV two. We want to get off our dependence on fossil fuels so we can begin to address the tremendous and ominous challenges of climate change, which are playing out every day. And we see it not only in our country, in the West, and other foreign countries like Pakistan that was flooded. I mean, this is no joke. And we know that fossil fuels are contributing greatly to this. So I'm calling on Governor Murphy. Your executive order is not sufficient unless you deny the permit for CPV two and the six other fossil fuel projects pending in New Jersey. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, who is this?
Uh, good evening. Um, this is the other person that was having difficulty to get unmuted. For some reason, that feature was blocked for individuals who were calling in. My name is Sharon Huberman, and I am a resident and also a community advocate in the city of Perth Damboi. My name is Sharon Huberman and I am a resident and also a community advocate in the city of Port Dambly. And I welcome that all of the individuals who are participating in this very important hearing. But what I am here to state is that the quality of the air, the air quality in the city of Port Dambly has severely deteriorated. I have reported more than one incident where it has come to my attention that some of the poor quality is stemming out of Casey, New Jersey. And in the midst of COVID, the city of Port Dambly were the strongest hit by COVID. And that has a lot to do with the air pollution that we're constantly breathing. The purpose of the environmental justice law is to protect communities that are similar to the one that I live in. Majority of the population in the city of Port Dambly is about 80% of Hispanic descent. And I find it extremely disheartening that notice of this meeting was not properly communicated to members of the community that only speak Spanish. I also find it even more disheartening that residents in the city of Casey, who also speak Spanish, were not provided with information regarding this hearing today. And the difficulties that I had to just try to unmute myself, no person participating in the meeting should go through that. So I do say thank you to Mr. Cradaville for at least advocating for my voice to try to be heard. What is happening here is that I believe that there is an effort to have clean energy. But yet what I don't hear in your presentation is that there are alternative ways of obtaining clean energy, for example, even biodiesel fuels of which you are not using. You're utilizing substances that when burned, the reality is that they are toxic, not only to the environment, to the animals, to children, to the elderly, to everyone. And those toxins permeate into the surface of the ground. Therefore, if you try to plant your vegetables, eat healthy, it's too, it's not going to help at all. So I find that the statistics that are being placed in front of all of the people participating in this conference, they're good statistics if they make you sleep better. But the reality is that the statistics that we're not seeing and that we're not listening is to the percentage of people who have been dying from cancer, have died from COVID and have been expected with their immune system, their breathing capabilities. It is a crying shame that those statistics are not being shared. And we wouldn't be even having this hearing if you're not looking to receive the necessary waivers that are supposed to afford members of the community at least some protection. So that being said, if you are requesting waivers and that tells me that we will be released into the air, into the water, into the surrounding surface, is going to exceed a maximum contaminant level, which if it was up to me, I think even those levels are too high. So I'm strongly against this recommendation that you're trying to put forward to approve your permit. And I strongly believe that if you want to really have a hearing of the citizens, that you take into consideration the citizens that it will impact. And I speak for my community, which is mostly of Hispanic descent. And I think you've done a disservice by not providing notice of this meeting in both bilingual factions. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to extend on until 9:00 PM. At 9:00 PM, we will have to stop, but we will continue to go through comments until then. Again, we do encourage everyone to send in written comments, written questions as well, even if you're speaking here today. We'll move on again to Janine Abromeo. I'm sorry about that name.
Hello, good evening. My name is Janan from Passaic County, New Jersey. I'm a public health intern with CleanEarthForKids.org. I am making this comment on behalf of myself, my family, my community and my organization, CleanEarthForKids.org. We must stop the Woodbridge gas power plant to protect the children and families of New Jersey, to protect our health and the air we breathe. Air pollution harms nearly every cell and every organ in the body. If it is built, this power plant would be only six miles from 70 schools. Air pollution drifts through the air and it is clear we need to put a halt to this power plant now, especially for our kids. The harmful emissions from the Woodbridge power plant would include approximately 148.7 tons of nitrogen oxide, 125.5 tons of ammonia, 110.3 tons of carbon monoxide and 39.9 tons of sulfur dioxide, as well as 123.6 tons of particulate matter, along with other toxic air, water and land contaminants. PM 2.5 increases the risk of pre-birth, stillbirth and low birth weight babies and increased heart, lung and brain diseases, as well as other serious illnesses. Please do not build this power plant. Please instead invest in rooftop, solar, wind, battery storage and microgrids. And follow the work of Mark Z. Jacobson from Stanford and Michael E. Mann from Penn State and others. We do not need this gas power plant. Protecting the residents of New Jersey and our environment is crucial for the future and the water we drink. This power plant would also be next to the Raritan River. Let's work together to improve our health, clean air and water, as well as our environment and climate. A better way of life calls for a better future. We must say no so the Woodbridge gas fire plant can go. Governor Murphy and the DEP must deny this unnecessary polluting project. Thank you from Janan, the Public Health Intern at CleanEarthForKids.org.
Thank you. We still have about 15 people that want to speak. So if you are willing to cut down your comments a little in length, I'm sure everybody would appreciate if we could get through. Next up is Enes Sari Bengal.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please, your name for the record and where you're from.
I'm Enes Bengal. I'm resident of Long Branch in Monmouth County, just south of Middlesex County, just a little south of Woodbridge. I object to the building of this power plant. The presenter made a misrepresentation in his, in his, in his slide set, he claimed that the cumulative CO2 and all the other emissions will be, with a CO2, that it will be 2.3 million tons of CO2, whereas it's actually going to be double that. I will appreciate if you can send those slides to the people who registered for this meeting because they were, they were very fast and it was not possible to see all the details. But at least that's I caught, that there was a misrepresentation by the CPP presenter there for a minimum that I saw that. Now, Woodbridge mayor, apparently, Woodbridge used to be the, it has a gold star from Sustainable Jersey, but this action really completely wipes out that, that pretension of having anything to do with sustainability. It's just in the, just for the sake of the money that he'll be getting maybe. But is it worth the lives and health of the residents of Woodbridge and of the towns that are adjacent to that power plant? And in contributing to the the climate crisis that we are now moving into further phases of. Just this past summer, wasn't it, that a million shellfish just died because of extreme heat in Washington? Even more closer that the Bay Area had a huge marine life kill. We are having whales washed up to our shores here in New York and New Jersey. It was an article today in the New York Times that attributed that to climate change. We're already seeing these horrible effects of climate change. Why do we get to keep on building more? Governor Murphy, if you have any aspirations to be one day the President of the United States, I urge you to reject this power plant and all the other fossil fuel predictions because they will, we want to vote for you in the primaries. Why don't you build this in Braintree, Massachusetts, next to your headquarters? So you can, you can breathe the fumes all day long yourselves instead of.
Could you please wrap it up?
Okay, I think what you should be building here is a solar panel plant or a wind turbine plant. We're going to have 30 gigawatts of wind turbines off New Jersey and New York in the next 10, 15 years. We have extreme need for it. And for that Teamsters gal who talked for Hazlet, the labor unions are foolhardy to be advocating for this power plant. There is huge demand for buildings, solar panels, for wind turbines. So that's what we need.
We're going to have to move on at this point. Thank you. Alexa Harris?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, hi. Sorry, I was like saying muted and everything like that. Hi, good evening. My name is Alexa and I'm a resident of Saraville, which is not too far from Woodbridge. I used to go to the Woodbridge Mall all the time with my parents. Now we don't, but Saraville is where my environmental commission and borough council have signed on to the resolution against the Woodbridge Power Plant. And I'm also on speaking behalf of ARU Progressive, a Rutgers University organization. And we've also signed the petition against this power plant. I just wanted to echo this, most or all the statements that my peers, echo the statements that my peers and previous speakers have made. Why is the park that the company, is it like promised to clean up, is not cleaned up? Again, you can't cancel out a brown site by putting another brown site, putting a fossil fuel plant on it. Governor Murphy announced that he's escalating the timeline for green, for clean power reliance by 15 years, which is nothing to joke about or kid about. If we are concerned about supplying energy demand, then implement measures to lower energy demands overall. Environmental solutions that are successful and have proven to for energy demands such as constructing and promoting alternative forms of transportation, bikes and buses, and committing to these projects full-heartedly, such as Paris. They're just putting it in. We don't have to wait for five years of collecting data and then questioning if this data is even usable. But they're really committing to providing alternative forms of transportation and decreasing the reliance on fossil fuels and energy demand. Sustainability competitions within companies, schools, institutions, teaching compost in schools from K to 12 and providing home composting solutions and education, promoting shorter and colder showers. The list goes on. But my point is that the plant is not the solution and we need to implement multiple solutions, including rejecting this power plant. I'm really concerned with the air quality going even down. Saraville is considered an overburdened community and air, dirty air pollutants like PM 2.5, they don't just stick around and sit on the grass waiting to be vacuumed up. They travel. They travel a lot more than maybe like Carmen San Diego has ever done. So this is a really huge concern for myself at the age of 24. This is going to be a huge concern for the kids of my siblings, for future generations. This is a concern for people right now. This is something that we've seen the air quality go down in Newark. Let's not be another air, air quality concern in New Jersey. Instead, we should restrict any new projects concerning fossil fuels. So promoting or pushing this project to go on sounds very sadistic when it comes to public health. I can't think of another way to put it, but I strongly urge for this project to be shut down and no fossil fuels whatsoever be constructed moving forward. We've put off, we've put off this decision for decades and it's way too late. We're seeing climate change affecting everyone, or I should say global warming. It has a very huge salience issue and we cannot be, we should not be harming ourselves even more. Thank you.
Jean Boyle? You were unmuted for a minute and I think you're muted again. There you go.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Okay, my name, my name is Jean Boyle and I'm another resident of Metatchen speaking tonight. I support Food and Water Watch and I'm active in Citizens Climate Lobby. I'm also president of my condo association in Metatchen and I'm a parishioner at Trinity Church Woodbridge. I spend a lot of time in Woodbridge. I'm here to oppose the building of yet another gas-fired power plant in Woodbridge. My home is the Crowflies. It's only about two and a half miles from the site of the proposed plant. Having to breathe the additional pollution a plant will put into our air is extremely frightening. We know that there will be negative direct health impacts and that air pollutants from gas-fired power plants are a major contributor to the climate crisis. If we as a society don't stop now building plants like the one proposed here, we will hasten climate change and accelerate global warming. We know what this means. It means more frequent and extreme storms, more flooding, more fires, more property damage, more injuries, more health problems and sadly more deaths. Lastly, although Metatchen has not yet adopted a resolution opposing the plant, you've seen tonight that there are people in Metatchen, from those of us who have spoken from Metatchen, who are very concerned about this plant and we oppose its construction. Governor Murphy and the DEP must deny this unnecessary polluting project. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager?
Yes, good evening. My name is Manije Sabah. And I am a resident of County of Somerset, Somerset County, where our, where our council passed the resolution against the Kispie Power Plant and also our county, Somerset County passed a resolution against the power plant. So I would cut my, my talk because everybody has said most of the things that I wanted to say. And I just want to say that I am also a member of Food and Water Watch. As I, as I, as I see, as I see it and I understand it, the whole, the whole planet is on crisis and is on crisis environmentally. So I would ask the Governor Murphy, who has repeatedly said he would support 100% clean energy during his administration, to walk his talk and ensure that NJDEP observes all the safety requirements and deny this unnecessary deadly power plant. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Charlie Cradaville?
Yes, good evening. Name is Charlie Cradaville. I'm a proud Middlesex County resident where I've lived for almost 20 years now. I'm also the Central Jersey Organizer at Food and Water Watch and Food and Water Action. I'm so grateful to the over 150 people who came out to stand in solidarity and speak truth to power, to explain to you the reality on the ground here in the community we call home. We already have too much pollution here in our air and in our water, way too much to justify plans for another dirty project like this. We've tried to engage with the Department of Environmental Protection for years about this project. And we were promised a meeting with the DEP to discuss our concerns. We were asked to prepare a list of questions for that meeting and we did so. We provided them and we continued to follow up diligently. We were told that the meeting would happen. We promised the meeting's going to happen. The meeting's definitely going to happen. And then the meeting didn't happen. Regrettably, I can only conclude after tonight that this is not environmental justice. This is a manifest injustice that's taking place right here. And as the DEP rushes to approve an outdated and destructive project, the voices of the overburdened communities of Middlesex County are being ignored, as they have been for the past several years. the voices of the overburdened communities of Middlesex County are being ignored as they have been for the past several years. Governor Murphy needs to step it up and reject this project. His administration is currently violating the Energy Master Plan statute. And they still have not implemented the environmental justice law thirty months after it was signed. Our overburdened communities deserve more than lip service, more than one single Microsoft Teams meeting, and more than three minutes to talk about this project and its impact. And at the end of the day, we all deserve much better from our leaders. It's insane to even be considering a project like this when we know it will harm public health and our climate. So I want to applaud everyone who's here tonight, as well as the fifty-plus community organizations that have endorsed the campaign to stop your dirty project. And of course, to the elected leaders who formerly opposed this project. Fifteen elected government bodies so far, including ten Middlesex County municipal governments. Their leaders did the right thing. Now we need the state to listen to this message, wake up and stop doing damage to our air, water, and climate. This hearing process was completely botched. Even though the Department of Environmental Protection says the notification requirements should be consistent with the EJ law, this hearing is not anywhere near what was contemplated when that law passed. It is absurd and I have many questions that I'll submit in writing, but I do want to just say respectfully, Mr. Schelberg, you're sitting at a desk at your job out of state right now and we are living with the consequences of your corporation's actions. This hearing was poorly noticed and people's comments were cut short. So I challenge you to come to Middlesex County and hold a proper hearing, or better yet, withdraw your application and stop jumping on key. Governor Murphy and the DEP must reject this unnecessary polluting project.
David Pringle?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. I am from Cranford, seven miles from the plant. I am also representing Clean Water Action. We have thousands of members in the immediate area in northern Middlesex and southern Union County. And I'm supporting in solidarity all the local citizens, especially the N double A C P gentleman, who I think was more, nailed it more than anybody else, although Charlie might be a very close second. And I know and respect Mayor McCormick. He's making an economic decision. And it's all of the economic decisions in history as to why we have environmental injustice. It's for jobs, it's for profit, it's for tax ratables for the greater community. Guess who loses? The local community. And that's unacceptable, especially in this, it's this day and age. And given the environmental justice law, and I was one of the lead advocates that helped secure that law. And this project is a poster child for why we need it. And shame on CBV for rushing it through. And shame on the Murphy administration for not adopting the rules when they promised to by November of twenty twenty-one. Because had they done that, we would not be having this hearing tonight. So speaking of not having this hearing tonight, I noticed the very first slide and I've been listening the entire hearing. The very first slide, we wouldn't be having this hearing if you meant the very first slide. The very first slide said responsible energy starts with us. This project is not responsible energy. And we know, given we're here two and a half year, or three hours now later, that CBV is not responsible. But we know the administration is listening. I know there are DEP folks listening to this call today. I know you are required to report to DP and we are recording and listening and we will report to DEP. What you don't report, if you don't report, there will be a second airport. There will be a second hearing on the Title V permit. This is just the administrative order hearing. But the biggest test for CBV and for the Murphy administration is putting your money where your mouth is. Facts and science matter. I heard a lot of, I've heard a lot of science. I heard a lot from labor unions about non-science. And I hate to say that, but that's the truth. What amount of particulate is safe? I didn't ask what's permitted, what is safe. Science says there's not. This will increase pollution. There's no such thing as clean gas. It leaks, it comes from fracking. It causes coal pollutants and it's not clean. If you're talking about where you burn it, sure, maybe it's less dirty, some other options. But if you look at the whole life cycle, given fracking, gas is no better than coal. It's wonderful to talk about, we're meeting EPA definition of environmental justice, but you're not meeting the definition of environmental justice under the New Jersey law. And environmental justice is a lot more than about involvement. If the environmental justice community is involved, but you're not reducing pollution, that's a nonstarter.
Mr. Pringle, if you could wrap it up, please?
Sure. I'm gonna, one add, I hope that you're keeping, I hope the chat is a matter of the public record. And I know you're not answering questions, but I hope you at least acknowledge whether the chat will be part of this record. And if anybody can record the chat that's listening now, please do so right now. I would also like to point out, as pathetic as the Camden Kufana incinerator is and their AO hearing was, at the very least, they answered questions. So Camden incinerator set extremely low bar and you have failed to clear it. And with that, I'm just gonna ask you to change your business model. Your business model makes money for corporate shareholders by poisoning local people. Change your business model. Have a good night.
Rachel Dawn Davis?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Rachel Dawn Davis, Penelope and resident and public policy and justice organizer for Water Spirit, the Ministry of the Sisters of St. Joseph of Peace. We offer testimony on behalf of our thousands of members and in solidarity with front and frontline, frontline communities throughout this stolen land we are all, we all occupy. Air and water know no bounds and contamination is costly as has been refrained tonight. The vast majority of Woodbridge doesn't know about this project. So this is, was a very small representation of people who care about this and can make it. Methane gas is eighty-six times as potent as CO2 over twenty years and thirty-four times as potent over a hundred years. People know this. This is common knowledge. So to say that it's not is ludicrous. We urge NJDEP and Governor Murphy uphold your oaths of office and act faithfully in the best interest of the health of residents and all New Jerseyans. Deny this Title V air permit now. NJDEP and Governor Murphy know enough now to know that the health implications run in direct contrast with any purported goals related to public health. They may claim. CPV, this is not meaningful involvement. Rescind your air permit application. NJDEP and Governor, and Governor Murphy, put your faith into real action. It is irresponsible that New Jerseyans are fighting seven projects. Solar siting still has not been done fully to date. Proper assessments for alternatives have not been done throughout the state or PJM. Green infrastructure analyses are not yet coordinated. New Jersey is leading on holding fossil fuel companies accountable finally. What will this hearing accomplish? What? Especially as Governor deflects and excuse, and excuses are made at the expense of people in the name of precious water. We need local and statewide leadership to embrace the spirit of the environmental justice cumulative impacts law. It is twenty twenty-three. How are we still talking about new fossil fuel projects? This project has widespread opposition. Fossil fuel exacerbates costly climate emergency and physical, mental health crises. There is another path, a better, more helpful path for kids and future generations of all creation. Is there opposition? Yes. Edison, Highland Park, Hoboken, Perth Amboy, Franklin Township, Saraville, City of Raway, Somerset County, South Brunswick, Cranberry, East Brunswick, Plainsboro Township, North Brunswick, and more. Water is life. Echoing Herb, what kind of ancestor will you be? DEP and Governor Murphy, energy solutions should be discussed with front and fence line areas and then, and only then acted upon. Will decision makers think twice before engaging in disinformation? A most terrible ecological sin, which fossil fuel companies are being held to account for finally? Knowledge is power. Thank you for the one opportunity to speak and thank you, everybody here.
Thank you. We're gonna go through to Stephanie Collins, who just raised her hand. And after that, we're, we will be cutting off the comments, but we will get through everybody up to there. Matthew, please. Your name and township and if you're speaking on behalf of a group. I think you need to unmute yourself, Matthew.
Hey, sorry about that. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, my apologies. Okay. Thank you for this opportunity to let me speak. This is Matthew Money Shatz from Food and Water Watch. We act for environmental justice and speaking for the earth, which can't speak for itself. As you know, on September eighteenth, twenty twenty, Governor Phil Murphy signed New Jersey's environmental justice law, which requires the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to evaluate the environmental and public health impacts of facilities like CPV's proposed gas plant on overburdened communities. Big shout out to New Jersey for being the first state in the nation to require mandatory permit denials if an environmental justice analysis determines a new facility will have a disproportionately negative impact on overburdened communities. But this is an overburdened community saddled with six fossil fuel power plants already. How is adding a seventh even an option? And how is this not being denied and the law not being followed if another gas-fired power plant will undoubtedly increase air pollutants, including CO2, NOx, particulate matter, SO2, and VOCs in Kiesbe, a community that already experiences some of the worst air pollution in the country? Not to mention all the adverse health effects on the next generation of children and the golden generation of those who have been here for as long as they have. How does this show any respect to any of them? Middlesex County consistently receives an F rating from the American Lung Association for high levels of ground level ozone. But if approved, this plant would be permitted to emit more than double the amount of NOx and volatile organic compounds emitted by CPV's current facility. I don't know about any schools you went to, but all the ones I attended made it impossible to get a grade lower than an F. So how would adding another power plant help? It obviously wouldn't and would make it even harder for the air quality to ever raise above a still embarrassing grade of a D freaking minus. This makes it painfully obvious that it will have a disproportionate negative impact on an overburdened community. How can this logically not be denied based on the law alone? The blatant hypocrisy spits in the face of the passage of the New Jersey environmental justice law. I stand with Edison, Highland Park Borough, the Highland Park Board of Education, the City of Hoboken, City of Perth Amboy, Franklin Township, Hunkabunkas in Saraville, and the borough in general, the City of Raway, Somerset County, Joey's of Clifton, the South Brunswick Township, the Cranberry Township, East Brunswick Township, Plainsboro Township, and the North Brunswick Township, who all stand against this as you should too. Before I close, I ask, why is this the only hearing? Please get back to us and let us know. In closing, I demand that CPV withdraw the air permit application. If CPV doesn't withdraw the application, then Governor Murphy's DEP must reject the application. As they need permission, a permit to pollute, they've requested that permission. And with all that has been said, why would you grant them the ability to build this major source of pollution and add to the already existing pollution and the embarrassing air quality grade of an F? I echo the majority of others on this call to state that Governor Murphy and the DEP must deny this unnecessary polluting project. Thank you. I'm done with what I have to say. Y'all can continue on.
Thank you. Audra Sabara?
Hi, my name is Audra Sabara. Thank you so much for your time this evening. I'm, I'm sure you all have other things you'd like to be doing. Of course, this hearing could have been held in New Jersey in public, but you've chosen to use Teams. And I find it ironic actually, because the, the work that I do for a living as a social worker is help people with disabilities, which is not a group that I heard represented on this call. And I want to just state something that I came across on the United States EPA site. I'm sure you're familiar with the EPA's website when they talk about climate change and the health of people with disabilities. I stand with people with disabilities tonight everywhere. When I say decision makers are not often taken into account in planning and that emergency warnings and other messages such as extreme heat are often not designed with people that have accessibility needs. People with accessibility needs have ongoing medical care and they are much more likely to have social and economic risk factors such as poverty and unemployment. So I urge you on behalf of all people on this call, myself who lives with a person that has multiple sclerosis and has been impacted by climate change. I'm asking you, come to New Jersey, breathe the air, and please provide environmental justice for us. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rayno Bannerchi?
Hello, my name is Ronald Bannerchi. I'm a resident of Plainsboro, New Jersey in Middlesex County. Just wanted to urge Governor Murphy and the DEP to deny this permit for this new gas burning plant for all the reasons many other people said beforehand. Governor Murphy is actually recently sued by fossil fuel companies for systematically concealing how much they've contributed to global warming and how much damage is being done in New Jersey. It really makes no sense for Governor Murphy to sue fossil fuel companies for lying to the public and then turn around and approve new fossil fuel projects. We really have no reason to believe that this plant is not going to provide additional damage to the young people and elderly in the community. It's gonna be the community that is gonna be responsible for the burden of increased healthcare costs for any pollution that is being caused by this new plant. And really, any decision to build this plant should take that into consideration. And if there's gonna be an additional cost, it shouldn't be put on the community. It should be put on the people causing the pollution. Gonna just end it there and say that Governor Murphy should really think twice about approving this permit and really reconsider the process for approving any other fossil fuel projects. Because this, I don't think the community was, was properly involved in this at all. And I don't feel like this hearing was adequate. So I think we should all, we should all look to do better in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Mitchell?
My name is Stephen Mitchell and I'm in Somerville, New Jersey. And I'm with Food and Water Watch. I have two basic questions. One is competitive power ventures still one hundred percent owned by a corporation named OPC Energy that is located six thousand miles away in Israel? That's my first question. And two, why won't the Department of Energy, our Environmental Protection, conduct an environmental impact study on a proposed power gas power plant to determine the environmental impact of building three power plants in Woodbridge, New Jersey alone? I, I think there's actually six, there's several different ones scheduled for New, for Woodbridge. I'm not certain about that though. Anyway, those are my two questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have somebody next on the telephone? Scott, are you able to unmute them?
Is that me?
There we go. We, oop. I don't know where. Hello, there we go.
Hello?
Yes, what is your name, please, and what township are you with?
Oh, I'm. Hi, yeah, is this, are you talking to me?
Are you, CM Wilson?
Yes, I'm so sorry. It didn't show up on my screen that it was me next in line. I apologize. Yes, my name is Karen Wilson. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I feel like a Verizon commercial. Can you hear me now? Okay.
We lost somebody on the telephone, so hopefully they may come back, but please, please go.
Okay, I'll just try and get to the point. My name is Karen Wilson. I'm a resident of Franklin Township. And I'm a member of Food and Water Watch. We spent many years fighting against natural gas compressors that they wanted to put in down here. I'd like to note they wanted to put it in at an active rock quarry with, that was blasting dynamite on a daily basis. So the lack of concern for the citizens in the area that these fossil fuel companies have is just mind-boggling. I can't believe that you're considering putting up another natural, I mean, another fossil fuel place in an area that has six already with an air quality that's being rated as an F. I know that talking to the fossil fuel company is kind of useless. You're doing this because you have to do this, having us speak tonight. And you're just gonna go forward and push your agenda because it's all about the money and it's not about concern for us at all. Or you wouldn't be looking to put another fossil fuel plant in an area that has an F air quality in the most densely populated state in the country so that it affects as many people as possible. It is just mind-boggling to me, Governor, and I would just be appealing to the Governor here to reject this because he has passed the laws and. because he has passed the laws, and they are not being applied, and they should be applied. We voted for Governor Murphy trying to get out of all of the horrific fossil fuel deals that the Christie administration put us through. And this is not just affecting the citizens, but it's affecting the constituents of government, Governor Murphy. So please, just reject this. Thank you for your time. Thank you for documenting my phone call. I hope it went through.
Thank you. Stephanie Collins?
I apologize for not being able to speak earlier. As a mother, I have been on this call through dinner, bath time, and bedtime with my children asking me what I was doing. When I responded, fighting another power plant, because that is a conversation I've had to have with my six-year-old prior to this hearing, my six-year-old simply responded, "Why? Why would we have another power plant with all the pollution we already see in the air?" Forty-three years ago, my parents made it to the US from a small country in South America named Uruguay. They came here for opportunity and for freedom. I've been lucky enough to have born in the US and grow up in Woodbridge proper in the 1990s, from Mobby Street School Number One to Woodbridge Middle School and a graduate of Woodbridge High School. I am now an Edison resident with a three- and a six-year-old. I live half a mile from the border of Ford's, which is Woodbridge Township. I live two miles from the new power plant. Both of my daughters have been determined to have reactive airway disease and asthma. My three-year-old with severe asthma has been hospitalized four times between September 2022 and January 2023. We have seen multiple pediatricians and pulmonologists, and they give me a disheartened smile every single time when we discuss the town that I live in and how medical professionals are well aware of the high environmental pollutants in the area. Both of my daughters go through four inhaler treatments total, with two different inhalers every single day. One is steroid to keep their lungs capable of fighting every single day, and another to keep their airways open just so they can simply breathe. The sick reality of that is that I have this conversation daily with many mothers and parents whose children also suffer from the same respiratory illnesses. I understand that you are all professionals that work at CPV, but I ask for you, for a second, to look at this issue at the human level. If you are parents. And please tell me that the torment that you've heard from multiple parents tonight don't rattle you internally. I think about how my parents traveled here legally 43 years ago to a country that sold them the concept of the American dream and how their granddaughters may not even see their senior age that they have been able to. My heart goes out to all of the mothers and parents that spoke tonight because I am in solidarity with you. I appreciate your time at CPV, and I ask you, please pull out the process of installing this power plant in Kiesbe, Woodbridge Township, New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody and your patience as we've gone through this long evening. And again, we encourage that written comments and questions also be sent in. The contact information is still on the screen right now.
Thank you, Deborah, and thank you, everyone, for joining. I will, I'm trying to find a way to see if I can copy the chat because I know there's a lot of questions about that, so I'm trying to figure out. So I am going to close the meeting shortly, as soon as I can figure that out. But thank you, everyone, for joining. And please, if you have any additional comments, and even if you were able to say all your comments, please send them to me at your convenience before March 31st, and we will work on responses to everyone. Thank you very much.